Planning Board's meeting of April 25, 2016 is called to order. Before we get started with our administrative items, I was remiss last week in not congratulating Laurianne Miller for a successful election campaign.
I was unopposed.
Nevertheless.
I couldn't lose.
It took a lot of hard work to become unopposed, so congratulations.
Thank you.
How many terms will this be?
Six.
Six terms. But that's worthy of congratulations in itself.
Thank you.
All right, what else did I fail to do last week? No, nothing.
On that, no, I wasn't here last week, so congratulations, Laurie. Joel, welcome back.
Yes.
Good run.
Thank you.
At least for me personally, it was a win-win. I would have won as you as my select board member, and certainly I enjoy working with you on the board. And I congratulate Laurie. I think we've got a board that is getting things done, is very diverse, and I think it's a good thing. We can all work for the betterment of the town and agree to disagree when it happens, but it's been enjoyable.
Yeah, that's been.
Well, thank you for those comments, and I certainly feel the same way. So moving on to our administrative items, the first item on our agenda is election of board officers and other appointments. In your packet you have the current list of officers, as well as members of the various committees. So what is the pleasure of the board on this?
I'd move to keep them the same if everyone's happy with them.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to maintain the current roster and a second. So this is an opportunity-
Does that include the committee appointments?
Yeah, if everyone's happy being on where they are.
Make it all one motion.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody want to not be on where they are? Then I would change the motion, but...
So this is your opportunity to object if you're on a committee that... Yes, Mr. Tumi?
I'm not objecting, but I just want to let our newest member know that if he wanted to serve on one of these that I happen to be on, I wouldn't mind him challenging me next time, but I'm all set for going forward with the soils board because we're working on different soils board regulations and there's a lot of stuff going on.
It's a dirty job, right?
Yeah. And the municipal facilities committee, I guess we're going to start getting involved with that again, I think, because of the vote that we had for the police station.
Anyone care to place their name and nomination for one of the other committees that they're not on?
I'm comfortable with the two that I'm on right now.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the current roster remains?
Mr. Avala?
Yes.
I was going to wait under new business, but I'll bring it up now. If the staff could check on the town's website, if you go to the planning board website, it lists the board members as three-year terms with some crazy dates on it. Everyone's got a five-year term, so the...I don't know who put those dates and years on them, but it's incorrect, so someone could take a look at that and see what happened there. But if you go to the town's website under Planning Board, you'll see it's...everyone has a three-year term, and that's not accurate.
Yeah, that's going to be fairly recent because it was accurate at one time.
It was, and if you go to the last town report-
Probably when they switched over to the new web service. That's probably when that occurred.
If you look at the last town report, it listed it correctly as the...anyway.
Well, maybe it's a conspiracy of some sort to...
Yeah.
...the tenure of the planning board. All right, well, thanks for pointing that out. Item number two is a definitive subdivision OSRD entitled Gendreau Estates, and this is the lot release request. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, Gendreau Estates is a 29-lot subdivision off of Old Fall River Road between Reed and Highland, which was approved several years back. The request is for a release of 12 lots from the performance covenant leading 17 under covenant. Under our subdivision regulations, only eight must remain under the covenant, so we have more than is required. The surety in the amount of $83,570,000 would have to be posted, and this amount was determined by DPW. This amount is for the construction of Michelle Lane and Charles Joseph Drive within Gendreau Estates. I'd recommend a conditional approval until such time as that amount has been received by the treasurer's office.
Is there a motion to approve staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And so the motion carries, and we have a conditional approval. Next, we have correspondence. Is there a motion to acknowledge and file?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge and file the correspondence. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the correspondence acknowledged and filed. And so we have...our first public hearing is 7:05, so we have a few minutes before then. Mr. Hanson, you want to cover any of your planner's report?
Sure. At the last meeting, we discussed the idea of common driveways and how they are regulated in our subdivision regulations, and I had a conversation with Tim Barber at DPW to see what his feelings were with how we regulate them. And we talked about at the last meeting how we could potentially put the same regulations on common driveways as we do with private roads, namely with performance covenants and street trees and bounds and things of that nature. As you may recall, we did just that recently with a common driveway within the orchard subdivision. We didn't have the authority to, but the applicant was willing to put in things like street trees and place a performance covenant on one of the lots. So the effort was aimed at trying to codify that. However, when we looked at it, we thought about it, we bounced some ideas around, myself and Tim Barber. We thought that folks are coming forward with the idea of common driveways for four-plus lots to get around our private street regulations. So if we were to go ahead and regulate common driveways, then in essence, they become the same thing as a private street, because there really wouldn't be much of a difference if we're requiring all of the things that we do now on a private street, from its construction to bounds and miscellaneous items like that. So I wanted to just bring those thoughts back to the board and see if it elicited any response and...
Anyone have any thoughts on this? Mrs. Susan?
Well, you couldn't have two sets of standards?
For common driveways and private roads? Sets of standards meaning what specific?
With, you know, number bounds, et cetera, material.
Well, we didn't discuss the number of bounds, we just said that they would be required.
No, I mean, things like that, so... It's...I mean, because you saw, you thought there was a need to do something.
Well, we were-
So what were you trying to re-
Right, right. How it came to be was DPW had approached us after the last common driveway application for the orchards, and, you know, they raised the question, how come this is a common driveway? It certainly looks like a private street, it quacks like a private street, so why isn't it a private street? And like I said, the applicant was willing to do the things that we require in a private street. There's a turnaround, and there are street trees, but we might not always have a willing applicant. So I guess their concerns are going down the line here. If we have several common driveway subdivisions, which every subdivision that we approved last year had a common driveway, if you can believe it, we had a couple of proposed or private proposed streets. What's it going to mean for maintenance? Certainly, these folks are all signing up for it when they buy into a lot with a common driveway, that they're responsible for the maintenance, but you know how it goes. People don't pay into it, there's problems with one resident who doesn't do it, and they're complaining to the DPW that, hey, I live on a five-lot subdivision, what do you mean it's a common driveway? It looks like a private street. So they were anticipating those problems down the line. Certainly, DPW is well-versed in maintaining roads, and they do a very good job of it in keeping a schedule, but perhaps the common citizen would not. And if we have those problems down the line, certainly we can point to the original deed and tell them too bad, but they're anticipating that they will have several of these complaints in the future, since that seems to be the trend with our developments. So I don't have an answer for you as to what direction we should go, I just want to raise the issue about, you know, how do we want to handle common driveways going forward? Do we want to limit them to two lots? Right now, the bylaw, the zoning bylaw requires or allows up to four, and says anything more than four can be approved by this board via special permit in the OSRD process, which is what we did with the orchards, and I believe Prospect Hill Preserve was the other one. So if this is the way the developers are finding around our bylaw and just calling it a common driveway, and we change the regulations, then it's still going to be...there's not going to be a difference between common driveways and private streets.
Mrs. Susan?
Well, even if, you know, the issues the DP...I'm not saying they're valid, the issues the DPW raised to you is the same for a private street. So we have a standard for a private street, but it's still if the...and the private street could be more than four, it could be 20 house lots.
Mm-hmm.
And if people aren't paying, you have the same-
Yep.
-issues. That does not go away because we've established some type of standard for common driveways. If people aren't willing to pay in, that's the risk you take. I don't have any sympathy for that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure probably the request the DPW would be, is getting, I'm assuming, is...the people know the answer. They're going there to say, hey, is there any relief if we want to get this, the driveway approved as a street? Is probably the real question they're trying to get to.
Mm-hmm.
And have the town take it over. It's by beware, in my opinion. I wouldn't mind discussing the concept of maybe going from four to two and look at the pros and cons of that, look at some of the history that we've done. I'd like to see a list of, you know, the last couple of years, what have we approved, what's been involved with them?
Right.
How many? And I think that would refresh all our minds. Until you say, I didn't realize there's such a trend.
Right.
And I wouldn't mind putting it on the agenda and just taking a look at it and see if it's something we want to visit.
Yeah, the other thing, too, is just, and I just thought about this, I didn't approach the subject with any of our emergency personnel, but how is common driveway handled, say, with the orchards with addresses? You know, somebody's going to have an emergency call at some point down the end of this common driveway, and it's not going to be intuitive. I know today's day and age, everything's GPS, but it's not intuitive for somebody when they're driving down the road to figure that you go from 650, I'm just throwing out numbers, 650 Fons Connor Road up to 640, and to figure that, oh, those five lots must be between those numbers down this common driveway. You think of that as being another road. And if it doesn't have a street sign, which it would, but if it was a private street, I just wonder, you know, what effects could occur from that.
Yeah, because their addresses are Fons Connor Road.
It would be, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because on Chase Road, there's a couple of private roads, or common driveways, and I was shocked to find out, well, why isn't their address the name of the common driveway? And it's not.
Yeah.
It's Chase Road.
Yeah, the common driveway doesn't have a name.
Well, it has a name, but it doesn't have a real address. I mean, it doesn't, that name doesn't have, is not their address. Their address is Chase Road, and I went, but he lives on South, no?
Yeah.
Chase Road.
Yeah, my common driveway does not have a name, and I live on, so I live on Pardon Hill Road, even though-
Exactly. But you're off of Pardon Hill, you're not on Pardon Hill Road.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there is kind of-
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly more intuitive for someone to figure that that's Pardon Hill Road because it's a continuation.
You're right.
But in the instance of the orchards, you would not think that 642 is down this long driveway, other than just knowing that it's between 650 and 640. And again, those aren't the numbers, but I'm just throwing them out there. So, you know, certainly another issue. But yeah, I can bring the past history back of-
Yeah, I mean, I suppose another option is to develop sort of a minimum requirements list for common driveways, so that, you know, it's not the full set of requirements that we have for streets, but it's something that assures that there's at least a minimum set of things that we want.
Set up two standards.
Yeah, but it's different than what it would be for a street.
Right.
So that, you know, we're keeping a distinction between the two.
John, well, we do, we do have some type of standard for a common driveway.
For a construction, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, 16 feet wide.
And that's not enforced by anybody, because I've noticed-
It's in the zoning bylaw, so it's not something that falls under the subdivision regulation, so it wouldn't be our enforcement.
Right.
And since we don't hold a bond-
It's the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
And for example, one of our requirements is a 20-foot apron, and I've seen a few that don't meet that requirement.
Right.
And you just brought up the issue of surety.
Yes.
There is no surety for that common driveway, right?
Which one are we referring to?
I'm sorry, in general, I mean, we don't-
No, there is not.
Yeah.
No.
And so I'm not sure that's necessarily a good thing for residents.
Yeah.
Well, it's-
Food for thought, yeah.
Yeah, some discussion, I'd definitely get some opinions on it.
Okay, so it's 7:05, which is time for our first public hearing. Is there a motion to recess the planning board's regular meeting and to open, reopen the public hearing regarding a special permit for a convenience store and gas station in the Office Industrial District?
Go, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so the public hearing regarding a convenience store and gas station in the Office Industrial District is called to order. This is a continued public hearing from the original hearing on February 8. In terms of background, the purpose of the public hearing is to give interested persons an opportunity to be heard. The procedure for tonight's meeting is that first, the planning board and staff will introduce themselves, then planning staff will read the legal notice and, actually, the reasonable legal notice relating to the continued public hearing, but correspondence relating to the proposal. The proponent will explain their proposal, and then we'll hear from members of the public that are here tonight. Following this, we'll hear from planning board members, and then the board will decide on whether or not to close the public hearing. If the board decides to close a public hearing, the, this issue will be voted on at tonight's meeting, otherwise the meeting will continue to a future date. If you wish to address the board during the public comment period, please raise your hand, and once you've been recognized, you'll have to make your way to the microphone, or Mr. Giosa is right now, and please state your name and address for the record, even if you've previously spoken. This is so that people in the viewing audience will be able to hear and see you. So without any further ado, let's start with the planning board introductions.
Kevin Mello.
John Susan.
Laurianne Miller.
Joseph E. Tumi.
Joel Avala.
John Hanson, planning director.
John Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, any correspondence?
Certainly, we have a memo from DPW addressed to myself from April 14, 2016, where he discusses the Fons Connor Road Route 6 congestion study. In addition, he speaks of a traffic assessment that was dated April 12, prepared by McMahon Associates, which I'm sure we'll hear more about this evening. In this memo, he indicates that a traffic signal is not warranted at this location, but he suggests a design consultant review and report on the traffic assessment in conjunction with the recent assessment completed for the town for the new signal at Ledgewood Boulevard. And in the event that a traffic signal is not warranted, he recommends that the developer provide the funds to support the installation of a traffic signal or other related improvements when warranted. Follow-up to that, on April 22, an email from Dave Hickox indicates that he has, in fact, reviewed the study with his consultant, and he agrees with the report's conclusion as to the impact the project will have. And at this point, they will use this report with the Ledgewood report as they move forward to study the complete corridor. He also, again, suggests that we request some type of compensation from the developer for future improvements when they are required. A third email here from Chris Michu from the Board of Health indicates that the concerns within the jurisdiction of the Health Department have been alleviated with the proposed improvements. And the final piece of correspondence, which I'm sure Mr. Giosa will go over in detail, is his response to the last public hearing, where he speaks of all the summary plan, uh, the plan, summarizes the plan changes and supplemental data that addresses the relevant comments. And that was dated also April 14. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Before I turn it over to Mr. Giosa, do you have any other comments? Any summary comments before we begin?
I would think it's appropriate to let him-
Yep.
...address the comments, and then we can respond as needed.
Mr. Giosa?
Good evening. For the record, Steve Giosa with SciTech Engineering, representing the applicant this evening. With me tonight is the development team. I won't introduce everybody again, but we have the traffic consultant, our gas station consultant, and legal counsel, as well as the developers here this evening to answer any questions the board or public may have. As you recall, at the last meeting, this is a proposal for a gas station convenience store on the southeast corner of Ventura Drive and Fons Connor Road, located here on the exhibit. Fons Connor Road running in a north-south direction on the west side of the project, and it's currently a vacant parcel of land. The last meeting, we went through the design rationale, reviewed the site plan, landscaping, and we did receive input from both the board, the DPW, and the Board of Health. Simplest item to address is the Board of Health comment. They asked that we evaluate the size of the dumpster pad, which we have done, made the dumpster pad a little bit larger to accommodate our recycling container, as well as grease disposal in the event that there is, in fact, food processing within the building. And listening to Mr. Hanson, the Board of Health has agreed that we have addressed that particular concern. While we're talking about the Board of Health, I think it's important to note that, you know, we're dealing with a convenience store gas station proposal. Up until about a month ago, the Board of Health had jurisdiction over gas stations here in town, in terms of reviewing the technical data presented by the developer for a gas station. And essentially, the Board of Health has rescinded that part of their regulations. They've essentially said that there are ample state and federal regulations to ensure the proper storage and dispensing of fuel products to ensure public safety, and that with the condition that, obviously, this project has to meet all of those stringent state and federal regulations, the Board of Health no longer feels it's appropriate for them to exercise any further review, given the fact that they don't have the same level of knowledge that the state regulators have and the federal regulators have regarding these types of operations. So there's no longer a requirement in town for this type of project to be presented to the Board of Health, other than to deal with the food handling element of the building. So we think that that's important to note, that, again, it is recognized by your Board of Health that there are ample safeguards in place under the state and federal regulations for this type of facility. Other changes we've made, there was a request made during the public hearing to add some additional landscaping along Ventura Drive, so we've added some additional plantings here in this landscaping strip, providing a little bit more buffering to the daycare center located on the north side of Ventura Drive, which was, again, a comment made. We basically continued plantings in this area as well, so we now have plantings along this stretch and this stretch of the development that were not part of the original proposal. Stephanie had, Stephanie Fuss, who's the landscape architect, had come up with the planting scheme, and speaking with Mr. Hanson and looking at the zoning, it appears that we missed the requirement for one additional tree. That additional tree falls under the special street frontage tree requirements along Fons Connor Road when we have a buffer strip that is between 10 and 20 feet, which is less than the 20 feet. It's allowed by regulation, but we need to have so many trees per linear feet of frontage, and with what we have proposed, we do need one additional tree. So we would anticipate, obviously, full compliance with that regulation, and we'll add the one tree to the design at the end of the day. Public Works had a number of comments on the project. Their comments ranged from showing existing utility lines in the public way, modifying the drainage system to bolster the capture of surface runoff on the site. To that end, what we've done is added trench drains, as they requested, at the driveways that the natural topography drains towards the public way. This driveway actually drains back into the site, so we don't have a trench drain here. We did add a supplemental drain there in here. We also left in place the more stringent drainage controls, the regular catch basin with the oil and grease separator, and we're running the runoff through those oil and grease separators onsite, both in this location and this location. So we've added some additional drainage to the site. We have added the requested utility information that the DPW was able to provide us. There was some information that their records were incomplete on relative to as-built utility lines in the neighborhood, but we have, in fact, in our opinion, addressed all of their comments relative to utilities and drainage. They asked that we propose the reconstruction of the sidewalk along Fons Connor Road as part of the project. We have made note that the sidewalk that's there would be removed and replaced as part of the reconstruction and construction on this site. So we'll end up with a new sidewalk on Fons Connor Road. And again, to refresh the board's memory, we are providing pedestrian links to the front of the building here and a sidewalk along Ventura with a pedestrian link in this location here. So we have, in fact, incorporated pedestrian circulation improvements as typically required, but also as recommended by Public Works for this particular location. There were some additional drainage notes that they wanted to address, the roof drains from the canopies we've now shown going into our onsite retention system, so we have modified our system to reflect that. And then finally, Colleen Madeiras from McMahon Associates, who is the traffic consultant for the project. As noted in Mr. Hanson's reading of the comment letters from Public Works, we have studied the intersection of Fons Connor Road and Ventura Drive. Colleen's firm is a well-recognized traffic consultant. They did traffic studies previously on Fons Connor Road for other developments, and they've analyzed this intersection. Their analysis determines that we do not deteriorate the level of service on that intersection to a point where we create a failure during any of the peak periods of the day. Mr. Hickox has brought that report or given that report to the town's traffic consultant. Their consultant has reviewed it and come to the same conclusion, that Colleen's firm has, in fact, made the correct assumptions and presented sufficient data to reach the conclusions that they have, that the project will not create a level of service F during any of the peak periods of the day at that intersection. And I spoke directly to Mr. Hickox myself as recently as this afternoon, and he confirmed that position for Public Works and asked that, you know, the consideration of the working with Public Works on a fee that might be appropriate for helping with the cost of evaluating Fons Connor Road further, as the town is looking at improving the corridor from basically the railroad tracks to Old Fall River Road. They've already done some investigation and study work, that work will continue. Mr. Hickox was clear that the cost of improvements for that work would not be something they'd be looking for the applicant to contribute towards, but they may consider the, or they'd asked that the board consider some sort of consideration for maybe study fees that might go to- might go towards the Fons Connor Road studies. We think that that's kind of a nebulous request that maybe needs to be fine-tuned directly with the Board, the DPW, and where the applicant is willing to sit with DPW and work out an appropriate fee and process for making that particular requirement happen. Other changes on the site, we did take a look with Bill, who's the gas station consultant, the relocation of the tank pad, tried to get a little more separation from some of the adjacent uses, the daycare center in particular. We were able to slide the pad in a westerly direction that does provide a little more separation to the playground area of the daycare facility. But, again, we now have to look at maneuvering vehicles through the site and taking that into consideration. So, this works from a maneuvering standpoint and provides us with a little better separation. And, again, as I started the presentation, we are obligated to meet all of the current really stringent standards for vapor recovery containment of gas product on the site. So, with that, I can't think of any other significant changes that have been made, and we think that that addresses the comments that were raised at the last public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Giosa. I'd like to turn to anyone in the audience that would like to be heard tonight on this proposal. Yes, ma'am. Would you mind approaching the microphone?
If you'd please.
Yes.
My name's Marjorie Noons from Kitty Campus. Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. I have several things that I would like to address that evidently was brought up last, at the last hearing, which I could not attend. I am opposed to the project for several reasons. The main reason, I have 100 children right here. Every day, that's there eight to nine hours a day, not 200 feet away, but 100 to 150. Everything that's been reported here has been reported to the playground. Well, our children are on the playground one to two hours a day, and if it's bad weather, not at all. But they do, our building is right here, the playground's over there. They are very close to that gas station. I've provided you with reports that shows that children should be kept away at minimum of 300 feet. I do, Massachusetts does not have a regulations that says that. I'm sure in another year or so, they will, but at this, at the present time, they don't have that. I, my concern is for the children that are there eight hours a day, five days a week, not four, 10 minutes that you run into a gas station. And I, and I don't even object to the gas station. I wish I had been involved with the original meetings. I would have liked very much to have been, but I wasn't aware the meetings were going on. Had I been aware, I would have certainly been here. Okay? So, there, I believe there were certain agreements made prior to the, prior to the public hearing, which is what you're working with, and I believe I could have been a lot more effective. However, I sort of, tonight's the night, so I'll do what I can. I'm very familiar with SciTech. Mr. Giosa and I have had three projects that we've run together. He's represented Kitty Campus on three occasions, in two occasions in front of this board. Kitty Campus 3, we've been there for 12 years, and I understand someone wanted to know, was I not aware that this was an industrial zone and things could go here that could be harmful to children? No, I wasn't. And I don't think we would be here tonight if they didn't need a special permit to do this. I was quite willing to take on the jail, the other things that were around, that it isn't a problem, but I would not have taken it on had I known that benzene would be that close for that long. This is a large gas station. I have visited their station on Hathaway Road, which they have, it's a sizable gas station, it's a convenience store, it's a Dunkin' Donut, it's in a package store, which is, my concern is just if they stay with the convenience store and the gas station, that's already more benzene than you can handle in that small area. And benzene is a problem, and you may be sitting there and going, why is she going on about benzene? Well, benzene is the, is the carcinogen that is in cigarettes that kills you. It is a cancerous product. So, I, I don't want five, 10 years up the road, a parent coming to me and saying, my child has, has a lung issue or whatever. I don't want that to happen, because I don't want to see the children ill. And if it happens, it's not my liability. Who's going to take care of them? So, I, that's a, that's an issue. The fact that there is a childcare center off of Russell's Mill Road that has a gas station and a childcare center, it was said, it was stated like it was 100 feet. I went and measured it, it's 312. It's perfectly within the norm, within the limits. It's 312. Now, I'm sure someone's going to go measure it, so we measured it twice, because I didn't want to mistake anything. We're 100, less than 150. It's a big difference. I don't believe that this area here, I, I don't read traffic reports. I read early education reports. But I, I see this every day. I know how many, I know the line of traffic that we have on Ventura Drive and how long it takes to get out. And to bring, you have eight pumps to bring, that can bring as many as 800 cars into that area a day is, is like, to me, that's mind-boggling. And if this board feels that they really have to, for whatever reason, approve this, I'm asking that it's approved with conditions that they can't, there can't be a fast food, additional traffic, additional cars, additional traffic. I don't care about traffic. I care about the, the air, the air quality that they bring, and it, and it affects it. There is a, there's an easy answer to this. Yeah, there is. Initially, there was an extremely easy answer to this. None of us, as far as I'm concerned, needs to be here. If you stop that, if you do not enter and exit on Ventura Drive, you eliminate the possibility of all that backup. If they were to, you know how when you're going south, or actually even in Connecticut, you know how you see these 10, 12, 15-foot walls with trees behind them? All they have to do is, is plant those there. That, that's a nice drawing, by the way. Thank you. The, all they have to do is put a wall there with trees behind it, and if the benzene is floating around, those trees sort of helps it dissipate. Okay? Let them enter from Fons Connor Road. Since there's no traffic problem, why not allow them to enter from Fons Connor Road? Again, I'm going back and forth. If they had, if this has to happen, then at least keep those big tanker trucks out of here between 6:00 AM and, no, I said it wrong, between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Make sure the deliveries are done then, because those tanker trucks, there's a small, small possibility of, you know, of an explosion. That doesn't worry me as much as lung issues, but I wouldn't want to see a tanker truck in here when the children are all there. I really, that would be very, that'd be devastating to the town. So, you wouldn't even be able to get the children out. So, I have, those are my two largest fears, is the traffic isn't a fear, it's a concern, and it's a concern that I'm going to have to live with, no one else. Kitty Campus will be the only ones that have to live with that traffic right there. So, it's, it, it does create a problem. And someone said that they didn't believe that this is real, that this is made up. Well, that's what they said about cigarettes. They were, they were good for you, too. I know I smoked, because they were, there was no problem whatsoever, and they were really cool. That's what we heard. Benzene is a problem. I even, would you please take the studies that I brought to you in January and at least look at them? Look at what benzene does to a body. And a little, a small child's body, it happens much quicker than an adult. So, I, I mean, I'm a, I'm a Dartmouth resident, and I believe in Dartmouth, and generally, we get things right. But the only way you get things right here is to do the right thing and look at children first. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to move if you'd give me a facility that, that I could, you know, just transfer. It isn't all that easy. I will tell you this much, if I were not there and I were looking for a site, I would never pick that site. So, it, it's, it's dangerous. And I, it's hard enough working with children, so you can't knowingly, I definitely don't knowingly do anything that could be harmful to them. Okay?
Thank you very much, Ms. Noons.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience, before I turn it over to the planning board that would like to be heard? All right, let's take the opportunity to turn it over to the board, and then I'll come back to the audience one final time. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments on this? All right, well, let me kick it off then with my own questions. We heard some testimony just now about the distance from the gas station to the, where the children play. Mr. Giosa, could you confirm what the distance is?
It isn't exactly where the children play, it's where they're at all day.
I see. Mr. Giosa.
This, this plan here is one inch equals 250 feet. You can see the pumps are in this general location here, the playground area is here. It's about 250 feet away from the building that Marjorie was talking about, her actual facility. It's not located here, it's located fairly back here. If you're looking at these dimensions, we have a 50-foot right-of-way, we then have 50 feet to the edge of the canopy, then we have another, I want to say, it's another 12 to 14 feet to the first or closest pump. So, we're already at 114 feet, and her building is another 40 feet or 30 feet back. So, to be conservative, let's pick halfway in between 35. There's 150 feet from the closest pump to the closest point on her building, measured in a straight line due north. From the actual tank pad where the storage tanks are, you have to add another 35 plus another 15, you could add another 50 feet. You're at 200 feet away from where the tank pad is to the closest point on her building. So, if this is 200 feet, the playground's here, I may have been a little too conservative in my measurement. It's probably a little over 250 feet in a straight line from the closest pump to the closest point on the playground. The Kitty Campus parking facility is here, you know, we talked about, their circulation comes through this area, their parent pickup, drop-off, at least from what I've seen, is generally in this area with cars sitting and idling in this location, quite a bit closer to the children than what would be occurring here, where the cars are not sitting, idling, and discharging the emissions. So, again, those are kind of the distances that we're talking about here.
Thank you. So, I'd also, you know, I have sort of a general question, and I'm not sure you're the one to answer this, but I did review the material that Ms. Noons alluded to, that the, the planning board was given, maybe at the last meeting or the meeting before that, I forget now. And as is the case when we get material in public hearings, we're obviously, the planning board is asked to review it and will then come up with additional questions. So, I didn't have any questions at the last meeting, but after reviewing the material, I, I'm not as comfortable as I once was with this proposal. And I'll tell you why, and I'll just read a couple of quotes, one of them from the Division of Toxicology and Environmental Medicine, which is a, it's an agency of the Department of Health and Human Services. And in this public health statement, they mention, "Living near gasoline fueling stations or hazardous waste sites may increase exposure to benzene. People are advised not to have their families playing near fueling stations." So, clearly, you know, the topic is not about daycare facilities, but it's about families playing near fueling stations, which they're advising for people not to do. And then there's also been a number, a number of studies that were quoted in the materials that we received. One of them indicates that children who live near a gas station are four times more likely to develop leukemia than children who live far away from one. So, this was from the, it was an article from the Medical News Today, and there, there were, you know, a few other similar studies that point to a correlation between gas stations, benzene, and leukemia, especially in young children. And so, this makes me, obviously, very uncomfortable. And so, I'm wondering, do you have any evidence that would point otherwise in terms of studies that have been conducted? And I understand that the gasoline station will comply with all state and federal regulations, but to me, that doesn't mean that this is necessarily the best site for a gas station. So, as you're aware, one, one of the requirements of the special permit is that the planning board make a finding that the use would not have any nuisance qualities or would be injurious to the health, safety, morals, and welfare of the community. So, simply meeting the state and federal requirements, I'm not sure meets the objective of protecting the public health in this area. So, I know that's a long-winded question, but, so the question is, are there any studies that you can bring to bear that would help us understand the health risks here?
Well, I think Alex has something to say, but to start the answer for your, your long question, those studies, obviously, are looking at historical data. They're looking at a wide range of stations, most of which are probably predating the current standards for gas station construction. So, they're dealing with older stations, in all likelihood, in urban areas that have not received upgrades. There's no mention, at least from the information you read, that indicates, what are they talking about by proximity? Kids playing near a gas station? Is it on the gas station property? Is it immediately next door? I think that you have to look at what is today's standard
I think that you have to look at what is today's standards for gas station construction versus what was the construction standards as recently as five or 10 years ago? And it's changed dramatically in that time period in terms of vapor recovery and how the fueling operation occurs, how the tank fueling process occurs. The safeguards are incredibly different today than they were just a short time period ago. So I think it's, it's probably not a good comparison to take a historical study, which I'm not sure what the date of that study was.
Well, the public health statement was from August of 2007.
Right. So we're already talking eight years old, which means they were looking at data from probably the previous 10 to 15 years. So you're probably looking at gas stations that were constructed 25 years ago. It, it's not comparing apples and apples. It's, it, it really isn't, given the changes in technology that have occurred over the last 25 years. So by that, those dates alone, that study is outdated. And I would say that it's not relevant to this, to this application. I'm not sure what Alex is going to provide for additional information, but I'll turn it over to Alex.
Hi, everyone. My name's Alex Innae-Carrick. I'm part of the project management team for the developers. I agree with Steve. There was a new regulation that came into play that was the onboard vapor recovery. And as you remember, if you remember, that there used to be the boot that there would be on the gas handle and you would put it over your car. Now what it does is, it's onboard the car. And they take all the vapors that would potentially leak out, and it's on, on the car itself. There's evidence that it says it's 97 to 98% of all fumes and benzene and any other toxic component that could get into the air. And I think that is, that's significant. I mean, there hasn't been any studies that I have know, I know of now that kind of relate to what you're saying. But, you know, some of the things that Bill mentioned, Bill Beard from Web Engineering mentioned last meeting is that there's more benzene entering the air from the buses that pick the kids up every day. Potentially. When you take into consideration all the new standards, Massachusetts standards, federal standards, stage one decommissioning, I mean, stage one vapor recovery, which covers the tank, and then stage two vapor recovery decommissioning, which covers the onboard vapor recovery. I think that's significant to point out. But maybe Bill can speak a little bit more to that. I know he did a great presentation last time of actually how much benzene would get into the air. And as, you know, he mentioned, it's pretty much zero. I mean, put it this way, there's actually benzene in the air right here that it's sitting in the air. There's nowhere in the world where you can go where there's no benzene. It exists everywhere. I did look at a lot of those studies that, that were in that folder. I also did my own research, some very deep down into the weed stuff, you know, modeling and sampling and Monte Carlo simulation, which is, you know, way out there. And some of those studies, a lot of the samples that they did were from other countries. And after speaking with licensed site professionals, you know, it changes so much area from area. You know, we might be in Dartmouth while right across the street, the sample might be different. And in other countries, there's different standards that they use. I mean, America is probably the strictest country for vapor recovery in the world. Again, we have the reformulated gasoline that's just in Massachusetts. That wasn't around when those studies were conducted. So I think, I agree with Steve in that, you know, some of that might be outdated. But if Bill wants to speak to it, I'll let him. Or if, you know, maybe someone else has some questions, I'll let them ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm William Baird, Web Engineering. I live in Situate, Mass. Just to add to it, the, uh, the gasoline, the, the recovery and this design is all in accordance with the California Air Resources Board requirements for fueling systems, the most stringent in the country. And some of those studies were conducted in urban areas where the vapors can concentrate in places like New York City or Los Angeles or those areas. The other thing is that this building is not within the prevailing winds. And I think that's an important consideration. That it's unlikely that the exposure, particularly to the children inside, that there'll be no increase in concentration, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, could you just point that out on the, on the plan? Where your reference to the prevailing winds?
Okay. This building is basically north. And our prevailing winds are either southwest to, or from the northeast. And so it's, it's unlikely that on any particular day that the vapors would be in the direction of the building. Certainly from the northeast, it's blowing to the southwest. If it's from the southwest, it's blowing to the northeast. And the building is not in the path of the general wind currents in this area.
I'm sorry, so you're saying that the building is north of that gasoline station?
Building's almost due.
Due north.
It's an hour right there.
The building is here due north, due north is here. The prevailing winds are either in the, to the northeast or to the southwest in this diagonal fashion. So we're somewhat cross-gradiant from a wind flow standpoint. Prevailing wind flow.
Prevailing wind, yeah. I mean, I have a, I have a wind, a weather vane on top of my shed, and it swirls like crazy. So I, I understand what you're saying in terms of prevailing winds. But occasionally, it sort of goes to the north or goes, stays to the south for a while.
I understand.
Yeah.
The, the higher the velocity of the wind, the less likely there'll be any exposure at that, the distances, particularly in a building. The air wants to go around the building. And so its velocity picks up and it, and it moves on. I don't have all the information that I had with me the last, last meeting. But those, I think, are important aspects. The other thing is that just a car idling for 20 minutes near the building puts out more vapors than this, this gas station in an hour. So I think that's something the board to consider. I can also say that if you have a garage and you park your car in a garage, your exposure to benzene is higher than it will be at this gas station. I have done many indoor air sampling for vapor intrusion from underground from gasoline or diesel fuel. And I can tell you that when we go in a house that has a garage attached, we cannot do any of the sampling that we would do in a house that was not attached. It's just so much gasoline vapors in the house just from parking a car, having a lawnmower, or any of those other instruments that would, or equipment that would use gasoline.
Can you provide the board with any independent studies that would support your, your personal observations and your conclusions about the safety of individuals next to a gas station?
I think I cited the reports in my last meeting, but I'll be happy to, to send you copies.
You cited those as, in a written report, or you?
I just, I believe I just spoke about them, yes. Yes, those reports are voluminous. And I basically took what I thought was the most important as far as this.
So you're suggesting that there are independent reports that would support your position?
There are independent reports about the dispersion of gasoline in air. I cannot say that there is a report that says absolutely there's no exposure. I would not.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I, I guess what I'm trying to get to, and that's, you know, the crux of the matter is, is it safe for, to have a daycare facility, you know, within 150 feet, 250 feet of a gas station? And so given the, the amount of, the level of concern that's been expressed about this, I think in the US and internationally, I would think that there would be some study that's been conducted more recently than perhaps 2007 that would draw some conclusions about the safety of locating next to a, a gas station.
I can say that in preparation for the last meeting, I did extensive research, and I've not found the document that you're looking for.
And so do you, what would you conclude from that? That, that no, no such studies have been conducted? No such studies, no positive studies have been conducted?
I, you know, there are, there's modeling and there's dispersion, and it's site-specific. And I have not found a document that specifically says you can have a daycare center next to a gas station. No, I do not have that information. And I don't believe I could find it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that my concern is that, you know, within this material, and I didn't, I'm not going to go through the specific citations to the different municipalities that have considered increasing the, the distance from gas stations. But it seems like the trend, at least in the material that we provided, is to provide further distance from gas stations rather than as technology changes and, and the technology improves that we can now sort of locate those gas stations closer to people's residences. So I would think that there would be a study out there that would support that. And I would love to see it.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Hi, everyone. Alex Innae-Carrick again. If I could just really quick bring something up. This we did not submit to the board, but it can be easily found. It's Massachusetts state code for gas stations. This is our operator training manual. It's what we have to follow. And you can see it's very detailed. You have to take an exam on this, pass a test, pass a class. It's very detailed. I mean, you actually, every single day, you have to go through. We have a checklist that we have every single day that's posted. It's about leak detection and making sure that the pumps are working correctly. This is all in our operations, just as I'm sure the Kitty Campus or a daycare has to do. You know, their inspections, we have to do as well. And they're very, very stringent. I mean, this is a very big book of, you know, rules and regulations that we have to follow every day. Again, it's state code, so state and some EPA and federal code. So, you know, that's just something I wanted to bring up and mention to the board very quickly.
Thank you. Let me get to the, the board members first, Ms. Noons, and then we'll get back to you as well. Anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Toomey?
Yeah. The lady, when she was up there, she mentioned 300 feet. And then she's mentioned that Massachusetts doesn't have that distance yet. I guess that's something we might adopt in the future. But the 300 feet, I'd just like to know, is that a medical standard that they're starting to go to? And then what is the standard in Massachusetts? It shows up in his code book of the minimum distance from a gasoline facility with this vapor consideration to a residential home or any other sensitive area?
Mr. Toomey, who are you asking that question of?
If you have that number from the book, I guess it's, I'm asking him.
There is no, there is no specific requirement in the book.
Okay, so Massachusetts has not adopted a distance, a minimum distance from a gas station to a residential or other children, et cetera, et cetera?
That is correct. So, yeah, that is correct.
And I guess what I'd like to, I'd like to ask you, where the 300 feet comes from?
It's a recommended distance.
Recommended by some medical?
By medical, American medical.
But yet, a planning board like us can only ask for them to follow what's in Massachusetts right now, correct?
I think you have.
I think we, we have to follow the, the standards in our bylaws.
Okay.
Just as to point out very quickly, yeah, there is no regulation. And on top of that, again, you know, this research and stuff that you have in front of you that was provided by the abutter, you know, that's great. But at the end of the day, that's not this site. And we do have Bill, who is a licensed site professional, who has done extensive work in the towns, extensive work on the bylaws of the towns for the UST regulations. You know, I think that's something that we really have to take into consideration, especially his credentials. Thank you.
Thank you. And I certainly, I'm not questioning anyone's credentials. And I certainly have a lot of respect for the people that presented here tonight, including Mr. Josa, who I've always found to be very straightforward and very professional. But ultimately, it seems to me that it's our responsibility as the planning board is to the, the people of Dartmouth. And one of those responsibilities is to protect their health and safety. And so I think reasonable questions have been raised. And I personally haven't seen that study that would reassure me that the concerns that were raised have been answered. And so I'm starting to repeat myself, but anyone else on the board? Yes, Ms. Miller?
I think the problem is, is we can't regulate where a daycare can go. If we could, we would not allow them to go into limited industry or industrial zoned areas. We would put them strictly in residential areas. And unfortunately, we can't limit that. But I mean, for the safety and welfare, it would be strictly in residential areas and not in industrial areas. So it's out of our hands because they can go anywhere. They can go anywhere.
But we do have discretion about where this particular project goes.
Where this goes, yeah.
Mr. Millen?
Well, as I said at the last meeting, there is the, and I did not measure, and I'm not doubting Mrs. Noons' 319-foot measurement. It would be interesting to know where that measurement was from in two, in reference to the pumps or the tanks or the fill. But there also is an additional daycare on the intersection of Bliss and Dartmouth and Russell's Mills that is very close to a gas station. Dartmouth Gas and Crayon Campus, I believe, is the name. So there's another site just down the street over the New Bedford Line. There's Dartmouth Street is little, right near the Dunbar School. Little People's College is a butt's, a gas station. They share, the wall of the school is on the boundary line of the gas station. The, I did look at the websites and to see if there were any regulations. There are none, as Mrs. Noons again said, for the State Department of Education. I, I find it hard to, to not trust that they're working diligently for the children of our state. Recently, as was mentioned, the, the Board of Health has changed their stance. And they feel that they no longer need to govern for the health and safety reasons of gas stations because of the state regulations on them. So I feel that, you know, I feel trusting in the state in that they're doing the right thing. And if the state does not specifically say, "We need a 300-foot buffer zone," I'm having a hard time saying to the applicant, "You need a 300-foot buffer zone." There, if that report, if the reports we were reading were dated 2016, 2015, I'd have a little bit more hesitation. But putting faith in a nine-year-old report, you know, technology changes a lot. You wouldn't buy a nine-year-old car as a brand-new car. They're not built the same way. They have different standards. So that's my two cents.
All right, anyone else on the board? Yes, Mr. Toomey?
Yeah. It's Mrs. Noons, right?
Yes.
When you decided to put this in that location, this child facility, I have to agree with Mrs. Miller that we cannot dictate where you can go with it. You, the state said that you have the right You, the state said that you have the right to not be held up by zoning. You can go anywhere you want. When you decided to go to that site before this gas station was being contemplated, did you consider the benzene and the acetone output from the body shop down the street on Ventura Boulevard?
It's, it's, uh, six hundred, it's only seven hundred feet away from you.
And so, you didn't think it was a concern?
Not, not that that, yes, that's, it's not, it exceeded what we have been, what the state has been recommending all along, that it not be three hundred feet or less.
Okay, now, the three hundred feet, I, I understand where you're getting that from, and I understand why you're asking. Excuse me?
The body shop wasn't there?
It wasn't? No, it came in after you? Okay, you did say when you were up there tonight that if this opening to Ventura Boulevard was closed off and a wall similar to the ones we see for snow control and, and noise that are, I guess, ten or fifteen feet tall, uh, was put across there and some trees, that you thought the trees would absorb or dissipate?
It would help dissipate. It would help move it. It would...
They would steer it to the, up in the direction of up when the wind pushes it?
Right, and it would steer it, it would move it just enough that it would, either fall, you know, the particles are heavier, so it would fall, as heavy it was, it would fall.
And that would feel, make you feel comfortable?
It, it should make everyone feel a lot more comfortable, but I mean a solid one.
All right, thank you.
Let me, let me show you, I'm sorry, I don't, if you don't mind. Let me show you what I'm talking about. I thought it was computer litter. I was almost. See that wall?
Yep.
There are trees. There are three or four specific trees, which I can give you the name. I'm sure that, you know, Chris would probably know some, that you could plant behind that wall. So, you would have a solid wall for about twelve, fifteen feet, and then you'd have another ten feet of trees. And that would create a barrier that would dissipate enough gas, enough of the benzene, that would, it would be almost like moving your gas station another hundred or so feet, because we were within a hundred and fifty feet. Those children are there.
Mrs. Nunes, um, yeah, maybe Mr. Josa would care to see that.
You know these walls that we have, that are on the highway?
Oh, those, those are sound barriers.
Well, they're sound, they're still walls. You'd guess it won't affect it.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Mrs. Nunes.
I have, well, go ahead.
Yeah, so, before we get to the audience, anyone else on the planning board, questions? Okay, so...
I have one comment.
Yes.
I, I just wonder, based on, uh, the discussion earlier on the studies and, and why they, uh, are referencing older, uh, gas stations, I just wonder if that magic study does not exist, that we may all be searching for it in this room is because the vapor emissions recovery systems are too new, thus you don't have the historical data to produce such a study. So, you really are looking for a study that may not exist yet. So, maybe you could address that?
Well, I think that's, that's exactly my point, that, you know, these new technologies and the new stations have come into play more recently. And, and again, an eight-year-old study has to be based on historical data. That historical data has got to go back, if you're tracking health impacts, is going back ten or fifteen years prior to those studies being completed. So, you are looking at twenty-five-year-old data. It's, even though the study was done eight years ago, nine years ago, it's, it's twenty-five-year-old data. So, I think it's unfortunate that there aren't more recent studies, but again, the technologies are so new.
Are you saying that there are no more recent studies, or that you haven't located them?
I, I'm saying that Bill has spent an extensive amount of time, I know the client has spent an extensive amount of time looking for something that tracks to a comparable setting, a more rural setting. We're not enclosed with a number of buildings around us, um, drive-through New Bedford, gas station with the, you know, three tenements right next door, you know, twenty feet from the pumps. I can point to the seven eleven I go to every morning. I think I mentioned this, um, the last time we were here, and I buy my newspaper. At that gas station, there's a three-story tenement building with the windows open, you know, during the summertime, and the wall of the building is the edge of the parking lot for the gas station. It's very common in urban areas, and I think it would be a mischaracterization to take an urban study area and then translate it to a rural setting where we don't have that wall of buildings holding either vapors in from an older gas station that may not have the same technology that is being applied on today's construction. So, I think it's completely irrelevant to take that data and then say that's comparable to a location like this, unless there was something in the study that said this was a rural area that we studied, and it's in an open, exposed area where wind velocities are moving the particles around, dispersing the particles. Um, unless you're looking at apples and apples, again, I think that it's a, um, it's interesting data. I don't think it correlates to this site at all. Uh, unless there's something in the reports that Marjorie has presented that, that disputes what I'm saying. But I'm, I'm going to guess that most of these studies are done in dense urban areas because that's where there's population concentration, residential concentration, and typically residential concentration close to the gas stations, um, where the dynamics of air movement are completely different than what you have here. The technology is more likely than not, not more likely than not, definitely not the same as the technology here, because those studies are outdated. So, I think, just like, I don't think there is a study that exists for what you're asking for. I think that it's, you can go back twenty years or fifteen years. At what point is the data irrelevant? And I think an eight-year-old study in this situation is irrelevant.
And so, I would, my concern was not whether it was the best study. My concern was, is there a study that was perhaps more recent, more relevant, that would substantiate your very reasonable claims?
I think if you, if you don't mind if I, you know, take a look at this and kind of break it down a little bit, uh, just for right now. If we look at where any fumes can come from, they can come from two places. One, when you're actually filling the tank, and then two, you know, they're not going to escape from the pipes because they're, you know, double-wall pipes, et cetera, very well engineered. But the other place where they can escape from is when you're fueling. So, those are the two things that we have to look at. Now, in the past five years, even two years, no, I'm sorry, uh, two thousand and twelve, before the stage-two vapor recovery decommissioning, that boot, it had a failure rate. And they said, I don't know the exact number, but it was about sixty percent. They only captured about sixty percent of the fumes that would come from when people were filling up. That's significant. So, forty percent of the fumes and benzene were going into the air and potentially affecting people as, you know, those studies presented, but that's been changed. And they found that the new onboard vapor recovery, which would prevent from the fueling any ba, benzene entering the air, is ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent or higher effectiveness. So, from a study standpoint, no, the sampling, that may not exist right now, but from a science and technology standpoint of where those two leaks can occur, that's been taken care of. One, at, at the dispensing, I mean, it even goes further that they used to be able to just open up the fuel and dump it in. But what they found is that that creates more flow of air and benzene. So, now what they actually do is they actually have to put a stick down and fill it up from the bottom. So, here's the level of gasoline. They actually have to make sure that when they fill it, that they're filling it from the bottom of the tank so the gasoline rises. So, it's not, there's not as, even as much fumes there. You know, again, the studies that you're speaking about, I don't know if they exist. I really tried to look for them.
And actually, I'm only looking for one study, not many studies, so...
Yeah, I mean, I, I...
You know, Mr. Toomey has one first, and then, um, Ms. Miller, and then we'll hear from Mrs. Nunes, and then we'll have the other people speak. Won't you continue, please?
Yeah, it just, I think that that one study that, you know, you could look at is definitely the, the testing of the stage-two vapor recovery decommission. I really think that that stands proof that, you know, there's very limited benzene in the air and gasoline vapors, uh, entering the air.
Thank you. Um, before you leave, Ms. Miller, you had a question, and, and then you're next.
I'm next now.
Now, do you, do you have a question for this gentleman?
Yeah, my question, I think, will solve this. We, I don't think we need this study. Uh, you did, or somebody said that you're, uh, building this station with the standards of California state law. Now, the California state law, they have a similar book like the one you just showed us that you use for Massachusetts. With all of the newer technology, the second-generation stuff that captures everything ninety-eight percent, does California have, along with the methodologies used and the technologies applied, do they have a minimum distance from the gas station to a residential or, uh, place where children are that they've set in their standard in California, and that might be able to help us decide what to do?
Not that I know of. If we do adhere to their standards, I would imagine that there, there would be nothing, but I'm just speaking to that without...
So, they don't have a minimum distance?
I'm not sure. I would check that.
It would be nice to know that number, and I think that's available without a study, because California must have thought of all of this, thinking of the new generation of, of, uh, recovery, and then decided how far away is safe for...
If, if it did exist, I mean, if I meant to say, if it did exist, if there was something, I probably would have found it. I mean, I was looking at studies in Nevada and Phoenix, Arizona, and all these other places around the country, and I did not see that.
Right.
So, I'm just guessing that they don't, but I will...
Did you actually look at the California ones?
I didn't, but I will look. I will look.
That's the one you're using for the standards, for the technology. And I'm just saying, if this gas station was in California, are you meeting all of the standards? And do they have a standard for the minimum distance?
We would be meeting all of their standards, but again, I'll, I'll check for you on that.
Okay.
Ms. Miller?
When did the new, um, the new laws go into effect for the new technology?
Two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve?
Yes.
So, if you want a study for, for anything that's done for the new technology, you will be getting it in fifteen years. Medical studies have to take ten to fifteen years. They have to have a certain amount of background. They have to have a certain amount of, um, data, and it's, it, it's a good ten to fifteen years before they can publish anything, to be conclusive.
I understand. I, I, one of the things about the three hundred-foot distance, I, I don't know exactly where that number came from. I was never, you know, we were never shown proof with, you know, three hundred feet. That's just a number I feel like that someone threw out there, you know? Really, if the benzene was the issue, is it six hundred feet? Is it a thousand feet? We don't know. I don't think there's anything that says it, but we, what we do know is that the, the technology that is in place is very, very well-built, and it should not cause an issue at this site for benzene and et cetera. I don't know if my father wants to answer.
Hi, Bob Carrick. Um, you had asked about the, uh, when the laws went into effect in two thousand and tw... It's actually Massachusetts adopted the California standards in two thousand and fifteen. So, we're building to the latest and the greatest at this station. So, you, studies, it may be a while.
Do you know how, when the California standards were adopted?
I don't.
Yes, Mr. Carrick?
So, Mass did adopt California standards?
This past year, two thousand and fifteen.
Got it. So, Mass and California are, are on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mass needs the country and EPA, you know, wetland regulations with the most strictest in the country. California's on April, so, I'll kind of follow this.
It would take me a little bit. I don't want to...
Yeah, okay.
But I will find...
That's fine. No, I mean, I didn't expect you to know offhand. Yes, sir.
I could speak a little bit to the technology, if, if you'd like.
Well, so, I, I personally, I mean, since I raised this issue, I, I will grant you absolutely, the technology has changed. It's improved over time. I absolutely do not have any question about that. And so, I'm wondering, has it changed enough? Has it improved enough so that, um, there is no longer a concern about the safety of residents or children living near a gas station?
I, I couldn't make a positive statement on, on that, but I can tell you that we did have a phase-one vapor recovery, and that was when the truck hooked two hoses to the tank, and as the product dropped into the tank, created a slight vacuum inside the truck that pulled the vapors out of the, out of the, uh, tanks into the trucks. We increased that safety by putting a pressure vacuum vent on the, just recently, pressure vacuum vents on, a pressure vacuum valve on the vents of the tank, which reduced the, the vapor emissions to essentially, essentially nothing. There's a small amount of leakage, but it's, it's very, I had all that data last time. At, at the same time, to improve the vapor recovery at gas stations, it was created a stage-two vapor recovery. And stage-two vapor recovery, there was actually a little machine under the dispenser that sucked the vapors out of your car and put them back into the tank as you were filling your car. The tech, the EPA determined that that was not sufficient, and they required automobile manufacturers to put canisters in the cars and change the configuration of the nozzle going into the tank, so that now there's essentially no vapor emission when you fill your car. And the onboard canisters take the vapors in the air and essentially save them for when you start your car. When you start your car, the air going into your engine goes through these canisters and essentially is incinerated in your engine. That, and right now, dealers are removing or discontinuing the stage-two vapor recovery, and they have a date certain, and I'm not sure what it is, but I think it's about a year from now, that all stage-two vapor recovery in Massachusetts will be gone. And so, when we're talking about studies of emissions and the effect on the population, this technology is only a year or two, um, been in, in fact, in service for a year or two. And so, quite obviously, we've advanced in our recovery and, and in the, uh, amount of product or amount of vapors that are allowed to be released from gas stations, such that now, and from when you and I were filling our cars twenty years ago, um, you can't recognize the difference in the technology.
And the reason I asked about California is that if, in fact, California was an early adopt, early adopter of these standards, then perhaps there are some studies that might not speak directly to my concern, but that would, um, support your, uh, your position.
I've gone through the regulations. Um, I will go through the California regulations again and determine if there is any distance requirement that they've instituted within the last year or two.
Um, anyone on the board before I turn it back to the audience?
Um, one other thing that came to mind, this board approved a, um, in addition with live-in space for a daycare center, again, on Dartmouth Street that has storage of indoor fuel. When this gentleman brought up the fact that indoor fuel storage is far worse, that kind of made me think of my own garage and my lawnmower and car and it...
Yep.
Um, but we did approve, in addition to a, a facility, a daycare facility, that has storage of, um, landscape and, and, and other materials in it. Um, and again, the state had no problem when the state reviewed it. It's the second facility of the same person. The other facility attached to a daycare has an auto lift in, in part of the building to service their, their fleet of buses. So, again, the state did not have a concern with a garage being a bu... So again, the state did not have a concern with a garage being a bu... working storage of gasoline right on the same facility.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Miller, was the state explicitly approved that, or are you just suggesting that there weren't any concerns that were raised?
Well, I think, I think the continuation of their license to do business as a childcare facility means that the state's not concerned with it.
I see.
That would be my deduction of the situation.
Sure. Ms. Nunes, you've been waiting a long time.
That's fine. There are several remarks concerning buses at Kitty Campus. There are four buses that arrive at Kitty Campus in every morning and every afternoon, and those children transport eighty percent of our children. That's at Kitty Campus Three to Kitty Campus Two or to their homes in Dartmouth and New Bedford. Each one of those buses has, is two thousand and ten or older, and they either meet or exceed the two thousand and ten emission standards. They also, four out of four, had a zero reading for opacity, which means they were not emitting benzene and several other contaminants. You can't, you, the newer buses have a system, and I can't talk about it very technically because I, I just am not that technical, but in any case, I make sure that they're two thousand and ten. They've passed, they have those special emissions on the bus. The other thing is, the other thing with their transportation system, we have a monitor and a driver in every bus, and when the bus is five minutes away from Kitty Campus, the monitor calls and says, "I'm on my way." My transportation people go immediately retrieve those children and bring them in. In the morning, there are no children outside. Those buses are there an average of three to four minutes. It's actually illegal for a car to be in the childcare center running, for the parents to walk in and out. Now, do I have that happen occasionally? I have, and every time I do that, they get a letter that tells them that if they repeat that behavior, they'll be terminated. So I have no cars sitting for twenty minutes in my driveway just emitting gasoline. I really want to correct that. We're very, we really do look at everything, that we, we try to look at everything that we do, and all of, it's sort of made to sound like we just have people with engines running all day long, but it's, that's not the case. Feel free to go witness it. It's, it's a busy time, and we make it even busier by getting the children in and out for several reasons.
Ms. Miller.
It's actually illegal to have a car running at a daycare center?
Yes.
There's a law against that?
Yes.
That's interesting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's illegal. It's, it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah, I know. I actually didn't know there was a law. That's very interesting. Thank you.
You're not supposed to be able to walk away from your car and leave it running. Doesn't matter if it's a daycare center. So in any case, that isn't why it happens.
Thank you, Mrs. Nunes. Final call for comments? Is this new information?
Yeah, it is new information. If I could just say one last thing before, you know, bring it back to Steve. As you know, I'm a young person. I went to school. I'm trying to get, you know, start, kind of work for my father. He's done a lot of stuff in the town. He's done a lot of stuff in Westport and the surrounding South Coast region. I kind of look up to him and say, you know, I should be like him as far as what he does and how he practices business. And I kind of even, sometimes even go a little bit further, is, you know, we want to do stuff right. We want to make sure that there's safety for everyone, for our employees, for the town. There's nothing worse, especially for a young person, and for someone like myself, I kind of originally was thinking about going to Wall Street, and then you had the Wall Street collapse, and there were some ethical concerns about actually working on Wall Street. So from my perspective here, there's nothing more, I guess, important than making sure that we're doing things correctly and that, you know, we're making sure that it's safe for the town, for the customers, for the employees, for our business. We wouldn't ever want to jeopardize that. And I think that, you know, Bill and Steve and Colleen from McMahon, I think that we've shown that, you know, this is going to be a safe facility. I think that the state obviously makes us, this has to be a safe facility, but I think we definitely kind of take it up a notch in far, in far, in, as far as our operations and how we go about proposing a project. It's pretty much what I want to say. If you have any questions, let me know.
Mr. Josie, do you have the summary statement?
No, I think at this point, it's the board's prerogative to decide where we head next, whether the board is looking for additional information or whether you feel you have everything you need to make a decision.
All righty. So what's the feeling of the board? Do we have enough information? Yes, Mr. Toomey.
I know the gentleman in the back said he looked at Nevada and other places, other states, but I just found out from the gentleman here that if Massachusetts has adopted California standards and you didn't find it in Massachusetts, that there was a minimum distance, then there's probably not a minimum distance for the California book, once you find it and read it or whatever. So I think we probably would be waiting for information. If we were waiting for that standard, then I think we've got enough to make a decision tonight.
Anyone else? Do we, yes, Mr. Susan.
Not related to this current topic, I think I've kind of beat this one to death, but I've noticed, and Steve, you know, an issue dear to my heart is the sidewalks. I believe in the preliminary discussion we had with you, there was a lot of, there was proposed sidewalks, there was even some additional ones, I think, around back. But I had indicated I would like to see them all concrete. I noticed this plan does not specify all sidewalks to be concrete. Can we get that on this, on the plan, that the internal and external sidewalks are all concrete?
That's fine.
Yep, thank you.
I don't think you can read it. I think it's been, it's been...
Yeah, no, out in the roadway, I thought I did see somewhere it's batuminous, or it certainly doesn't say concrete in the roadway, and you do say in front of the store...
No, I think we were thinking that on Ventura, we were thinking concrete, on Fons Corner, because all the sidewalks are batuminous from Hawthorne Medical all the way down there, batuminous. We were talking about the...
It doesn't say that over here though.
We were talking about these being batuminous, all of these being concrete in the interior and concrete down Ventura, because there's nothing there now, but continuing the batuminous here. But if the board prefers to see concrete even on Fons Corner...
We've been pretty much making that a standard, that...
Yeah, I know when we did the sidewalks at Hawthorne Medical, the last, the third building, we did add a link on the sidewalk, and that is a batuminous sidewalk, but we'll defer to the board if you'd prefer to see concrete.
It's, it's an issue I've noticed. It's not something we always catch, and when we do, the board has consistently said concrete, and you're not objected to that.
That's not an issue.
And, you know, I haven't spoken on these other issues.
There's still time.
Yeah, I feel I have enough information this evening to vote. I agree with, you know, some, all of Kevin's statements that, you know, the studies out there and others have said, you know, they're old studies, the technology is different, and I'm comfortable with voting this evening. It was interesting to see comments from the Board of Health that they've no longer taken, are taking a position on this because they are comfortable with the state and federal regulations, and they're the people who have the most experience in preventing any harm when it comes to public health, to our citizens, residents, and abus. So they've seen these plans, they haven't raised a concern. I know of there are a number of facilities that are closer to daycare facilities that produce benzines and, and, you know, our elderly facility on Dartmouth Street has a gas station right across the street. You know, we should be concerned with all residents, not just children, and yet there's no law to date, and I'm not saying any of those fears may come true, that we may find out with additional studies that there's something warranted there, but I just don't see the information here today that warrants us to be overly concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Susan.
I'll second that for discussion.
Yes, for discussion.
John, what's your recommendation on, do you feel we have enough information to close the public hearing?
If the board's not looking for these additional California mission studies that the applicant said they'd be willing to look into, then yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so the public hearing regarding the special permit is closed, and will now resume the planning board's regular meeting, which is item number five, which happens to do with the action on the special permit. Ms. Hanson?
Well, as you know, this is a special permit, so we would need a four out of five positive vote, motion as well as a motion to approve the parking plan, which is just a simple majority. As far as conditions that I have heard this evening, that we would like to place on this approval, if the board has someone inclined, one that a traffic fee be determined by DPW that is appropriate for the future engineering of a traffic signal on the, at the intersection of Ventura and Fons Corner Road. As indicated by Mr. Josie, they would be revising the landscaping plan, showing the additional tree as per the landscaping calculations, and something that wasn't mentioned here this evening, but that Steve and I had talked about, in that calculation, there was existing tree that they were utilizing. So Steve indicated that if that tree were to have to come down for construction, that they would replace it. So I would say that should be part of the motion as well. And a third condition, we have numerous DPW comments, which Mr. Josie has addressed, but I would still like to see as part of the motion that we receive a memo back from DPW saying that they have been adequately addressed. I'm speaking of the engineering comments, not the traffic. And it sounds like from both this meeting and the last, this meeting and the last meeting, that some sort of delivery time restriction condition should be placed. So delivery between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, I know was spoken of this evening. And then a fifth one just raised right now about all sidewalks being concrete. So with those five conditions, it would appear appropriate that an approval can be given, and...
I'd like to make an addition.
Hmm?
I'd like to make an addition. The comment about the DPW working with them on a fee simple or a fee to do a study, if for some reason in the future that it's decided that a set of lights needs to go there, it's possible that there might be a little land taking on that corner. Could that be discussed at the same time? Could the land be given to the town? Because it would just be where the light would go as, I mean, it's not that they're going to have to do it, but could that be part of a discussion?
Could it be part of a discussion?
Part of the discussion.
You mean, are we, we're talking about a discussion that may happen in the future?
No, the DPW is going to discuss with them. There's a possible, possibly they would help pay for a study along that corridor. If the study warrants a light at that corner, there may need to be taken a sliver of their land for the signal.
Okay.
For the light. Could that be part of the discussion that they have when they talk about the fee for a possible study? Because I can see where it wouldn't be a tremendous amount of land, but if the light would be beneficial to them as well as the town, they should be willing to donate a sliver of piece of land to the town in Dartmouth. But that's something that you can, they can discuss at their meetings with DPW.
So really, the condition is to discuss that topic?
Discuss, yes. I'm not saying they have to do it, but discuss it. Because DPW could look at this a little bit better and know if a light should go there, they'd know where it would be.
Mr. Susan?
Well, I think it should be a little bit stronger than discuss. It should be, if the, should be conditional, if the DPW feels that a future easement be needed, that it be hashed out at this time, that we not wait for it to just be discussed. If their opinion is, yes, an easement would be needed, let's have that discussion now, reserve it now for a future date. Get it down and agreed to. Not only do I want to see a fee agreed to, but if a future easement is needed, then that's agreed upon ahead of time, not a discussion five years down the road to take place.
Because that's one of the things that holds up the improvements of the roads is all of the land takings, and, you know, some of these land takings are two feet, and it just, it, you know...
Well, it doesn't have to be a land taking, it could be simply an easement.
Yeah.
That would grant the town permission to...
Well, no, if the state goes along with reconstructing this part of the road from railroad track up to the old Far River Road, they do land takings, they don't do easements.
Well, that's totally different than a light, though.
Yeah. Well, no, no, not that. I'm talking, no, 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 I'm talking about that little light. Yeah, that would be part of the study that's going to be done along that strip of property, along that strip of road.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering how this would be worded and what condition we're actually imposing on the applicant. This is a very uncertain proposition.
Hence my question originally, yes.
Well, when Ledgewood Boulevard was built...
Yep.
They had to actually put money in a pot...
Yep.
For those lights. Now, I don't know how much money was in that pot for those lights, but, you know, the lights are built, and they had to put money in it, and, you know, because you want to, you want to build something, then you have to help support the infrastructure along the road. And I don't think these people would be upset about improving the infrastructure along the road by possibly having a little piece of sliver of the corner for a light. We make other people put in lights.
I'm sorry, I'm not suggesting what you, that...
I mean...
Your idea is not a good one or a reasonable one. It is. I guess, I'm wondering, when we are approving the special permit with conditions, are we...
This is only that DPW, one of the conditions. If we're going to put in a condition that says they have to talk about, to DPW about doing a fee for a possible study, well, part of that discussion can be, if they need a light in the future, then they would be willing to step up and possibly donate a sliver of a piece of property.
I think Mr. Josie would like to comment on this, and I'm happy to have a...
It's a simple, it's a simple question.
If it makes the motion on that particular item a little easier, a condition that the applicant be willing to donate a parcel of land to accommodate a signal at the intersection, the applicant is willing to today commit to donating a...
Sliver.
Sliver of land that would accommodate a traffic signal at this intersection if required by Public Works or the state.
I think that's a wonderful commitment, and that solves the issue, I believe.
Thank you.
And not that anyone's left the room, but I would just mention that in the future, we should have this discussion while the public hearing is still open, just so we're above board on all of the proper procedures, so...
Well, we, this topic did come up. I mean, you raised it, did you not?
Right, but technically, the public hearing is closed, and Steve just spoke. Luckily, no one has left the room yet, but...
No, that's, that's true, but I think as chairman, I have the discretion of allowing anyone to speak during the planning board's deliberation, so I don't think this is out of order in any way. I appreciate what you're saying.
Yep.
The bulk of what we're discussing should be discussed at the public hearing, and the topics should be brought up, and certainly this discussion with the DPW wasn't in fact raised.
And the light was raised, so...
Any, yes, Mr. Toomey?
Can I just ask, this is just my own knowledge. If a traffic light had to be placed there, and it is on their property, isn't it simply an easement by prescription that you can have that let the light be built there on our property, and we don't have to transfer the property to the town?
If the town does it, yes, but if the state does it, the road along the way, they want ownership of the property.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, there's a difference. Yeah.
Okay, so any other conditions or discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Toomey.
I was just wondering if there's any requirement under the California regulations that have now been adopted by Massachusetts?
I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Toomey, this is probably something that needed to be discussed at the public hearing.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, never mind. I just, okay.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Susan. Yes, Mr. Susan?
The, the fueling operation, we heard from the abutment tonight, they would like to see that limited to 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And I don't have a problem with that, that should be a condition with those times.
Yep.
You, you had something similar, didn't you, or?
Yeah, no, exactly.
Yep.
6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Okay.
And in addition to those conditions, just so we can put together a proper decision here, which references the standards in the office industrial districts, which are that the proposed use is desirable, useful and convenient for the workers in the office industrial district. The applicant shall provide a marketing plan or other analysis that demonstrates the satisfaction of the board that the proposed use will receive 60% of its business from individuals working in the office industrial or nearby limited industrial district, and that a similar use is not located within 250 feet. So to speak to each one of those, it appears that the first two have been met by the petition signed by the area business employees that was submitted at the first public hearing, and that the third is met as no other uses located in this area are similar.
Yeah, I, I applaud those for the board for keeping us here so long on this particular issue. You know, relative to the safety concerns, but I, I think it was important that we addressed those issues. I was, I was impressed with the fact that the distances are such that they, between the gas facility and the daycare center, that they mitigate against potential dangers. And certainly, the new technologies have to make a, a big difference in terms of the safety as well. So I'm ready to, to vote in affirmative. Is there any other discussion on this? And so I think a roll call vote is required for...
And two, a site plan review vote?
Yes, so we'll do that after the special permit?
That's whatever you wish, sure.
Yep. So this is a vote on the special permit, and a roll call will be taken, so Mr. Mello?
Yes.
John Souza, yes?
Yes.
Joseph Toomey, yes?
Joel Avalo, yes. So that was unanimous on the special permit, and now we're voting on the, the parking plan review, correct?
Right, yes, correct.
And so we should have a motion to approve the, the parking plan?
With revisions, John, the tree, the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
I think were the only two, and the DPW comments.
Yes.
And the time to refuel?
No, that's on the special permit.
That's on the special permit.
The parking plan. Also moved up.
And the sidewalks.
Sidewalks, yeah, I mentioned that, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a discussion on the parking plan certificate, the approval of the parking plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And so the parking plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's the other tree going to go? Or is it already on there?
It's not on here, but it'll, it'll probably be somewhere up in this area here, because it has to be along the front that you...
Right where the lights go.
Yeah, where the lights are going to go, yeah, exactly.
Actually, right where your sign's going, Steve. I'd like to see how you're going to fit that one in there, you know, I thought about that.
Yeah, no, there's not a lot of...
Not a lot of...
Not a lot of room there, that's why, I'm sorry, but if we need a light...
Stephanie, give me some direction there.
Yeah.
A low sign.
We need to make towns do, the developers do a little bit more lighting and stuff.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
See you, Steve.
One of the things that held up Fonseca Road was plant takings.
Every time that we see Fonseca Road, I'm like, oh, Fonseca. This is not before, I think.
What's going to happen when they need a land taken to the campus or whatever, to put a light there? It's going to be fireworks.
Oh, well.
The state, not us, right?
It will be a necessity, yeah. The state's in that little road, yeah.
Well, that's, see you later.
That would, that would have been a good portion, I think, for the public hearing. All right, so do we want to recess for two minutes?
Sure.
We'll reconvene in the meeting, and I'd like to have a motion to recess the planning board's regular meeting and to open the public hearing regarding three proposed changes to Dartmouth zoning bylaws.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is called to order regarding the three proposed zoning articles, and the purpose of the public hearing is to give people an opportunity to be heard on the zoning changes before the, the planning board weighs in on its recommendation and before the zoning articles go to town meeting. Of course, as you all know, in order for a zoning article to be approved, it requires a two-thirds vote by town meeting. We will follow our standard procedure, which is the planning board and staff will introduce themselves, and then the planning director will read the legal notice and correspondence related to each proposal, and we will consider each in turn, or we'll have, get comments for each. And at the same time, we'll hear from the public on each article. And following this, we will hear from planning board members on each article, and at the end of the three articles, we will decide whether to close or to continue the public hearing. And I think that's it for the formalities, other than if you'd like to be heard, you'll need to approach the microphone, and please state your name and address for the record. So why don't we start with planning board introductions again?
Kevin Mello. John Souza.
Lori Ann Miller.
Joseph E. Toomey.
Joel Avalo.
John Hanson, planning director.
Ms. Kirby's gone.
Yes.
All right, so if there are no objections, I think I'd like to take article C, since it looks like there's someone in the audience that may actually be here or has an interest in, in this particular article, so. Ms. Hanson?
Did we want to waive the reading of the notice?
I'm sorry, yes. Ms. Miller?
I move we waive the reading of the legal notice.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And so the reading of the legal notice is waived, and first lines.
Okay, first, we have a memo from Anthony Savistano dated April 22nd, and in this memo to both Joel and myself, he indicates regarding contractor yards, he indicates four concerns that he has with the proposed bylaw. First, he indicates he is working on drafting a noise bylaw for the town and recommends that there be a discussion to avoid any potential conflicts with this proposal. Second, he expresses concern regarding the limited processing of material. The types of materials to be processed should be discussed in the bylaw, and importantly, there have been and continues to be issues related to processing of solid waste in town. He indicates he is continuing to handle litigation for the town arising out of processing of both solid waste and other material. Third, the terms but not limited to and incidental to are concerns of his, particularly with regard to enforcement. He understands that the ZBA may impose reasonable conditions, however, there is no requirement to do so. The board may not even address or condition the type of material to be processed or the amount of processing that would be permitted. If it did not, this could create a difficult enforcement to the CEO. And his final concern would be consideration of having the planning board and not the Board of Appeals be the special permit granting authority. And the other piece of correspondence, oh, actually, there's three pieces of correspondence. So the second piece here is also dated April 22nd, and this is from the Board of Health, from Chris Mishut, the director. He indicates that he has reviewed the draft version of the contractor yards, and he is indicating to us that the health department is concerned about the expansion of this type of land use in town without a comprehensive view of the proposal to vet for unintended consequences. The health department experienced with contractor yards has demonstrated that these operations can run afoul to the requirements of the town and state. Existing zoning limits the location of contractor yards to the general industrial district, and the geographical location of this area has been represented by contractors as posing a problem for their operations to serve the town. The proposal at first glance seems to balance certain needs and concerns by keeping the land use in a semi-industrial area, limited industrial, which is more strategically located along major service roads that facilitate the operation. However, with this land use raised concerns, and the following background information and suggestions are offered for your consideration to protect the town. Contractor yard operations that are most likely, most likely to apply for the special permit if this passes are construction companies that specialize in land development and redevelopment. Variety of fluid storage potential will arise. Contractor yards have had a history of accumulating old equipment, scrap materials, and difficult-to-manage earthen material and man-made debris like concrete rubble, saved materials, or junk equipment pose a significant problem if the operation is unsuccessful. The draft relies upon the zoning board of appeals ability to impose reasonable conditions. Operating standards limitations will provide protection to the town of Dartmouth, the residents, and the abutting districts rather than relying upon a board that has ever and ever-changing composition of members. There is no guarantee that new members will impose conditions. And finally, the ZBA may be limited in their ability to condition since the ability is premised upon it being reasonable and to promote the purposes of the zoning bylaw. Limited industrial overlaps with the aquifer zone three over much of the limited industrial district west of the power transmission lines that pass through Route 195 and Hicksville Road. Existing zoning bylaws protect the aquifer protection district from the storage of certain liquids. However, it is known that repairs and maintenance of vehicles and equipment is constant at contractor yards and will certainly be problematic regardless of the protection the existing zoning bylaws provide to the town aquifer zones. Allowing contractor yards will certainly be cause for businesses to run afoul of them without constant policing by town officials that oversee zoning. The aquifer zone three, limited industrial district overlap is narrow and bordered by residential areas serviced by private drinking water wells. Therefore, prohibiting contractor yards in the overlapped area should be considered. And finally, limited storage and processing of material is allowed in the draft, and this is particularly concerning throughout the limited industrial district. Unfortunately, earthen materials, soil are moved in vast quantities each day without any characterization for contaminants. Regardless of origin, no soil should be considered to be free of contaminants since it is hard to find an area where the footprint from our inventions and needs has not been left. Stockpiling soil without characterization poses significant risk to the town of Dartmouth, the residents, and the abutting districts. Man-made materials like asphalt, brick, and concrete rubble pose additional problems. These materials must be subsidized to facilitate processing from a solid waste into a recycled product. Contractors receive the subsidy upfront, and then upon processing and sale, recover expenses to generate a profit. If the subsidy is not reserved by the operator, the material must then be processed at a significant deficit, and therefore, may not be processed at all. A site is well-known in town that has succumbed to such fate and is now plagued with vast quantities of unprocessed rubble. Operating standards and limitations should be incorporated into the draft to provide safeguards against the threat of a release of contaminants into the environment, to prevent solid waste disposal violations, and to protect property reuse potential upon the termination of the contractor yard operation. And finally, an email received just this afternoon from Ms. Gloria Bancroft. She thanks the board for the recent work on the board and has the following comments. The bylaw does not define materials without a clear definition. This could potentially open our town to storage or stockpiling of contaminated materials, given the location of our aquifer in the limited industrial district and surrounding private wells. She is concerned about potential contamination risk, and there is no requirement or enforcement of testing said materials prior to importing them into the contractor yard. Limiting processing would only be allowed for 30 calendar days. Two points of concern here, how would the 30 days be properly enforced, and 11 months out of the year, the majority of the operations could center around storage activity. Again, storage being the main concern, potentially contaminated materials or fuel-related equipment that may contribute to contaminating the property and surrounding areas. There is no language to ensure the timely movement of stored items with whether materials or equipment leaving potential for long-term storage and related consequences. Mitigation of noise and dust. Unfortunately, these issues fall heavily on the residents, and although well-intended, town officials are not always able to resolve these issues. There are many homes abutting the limited industrial district, and rock crushing would not be a quiet activity for a neighborhood to bear. Reservations regarding vegetative buffers, which could successfully block the noise and dust of rock crushing or the visibility of the height of stockpiles from this industry. And finally, the Board of Appeals may impose reasonable conditions. She believes that conditions should be required and not left to chance. And that, I believe, is it for the correspondence.
Whose idea was this anyways? Oh, Ms. Landigan, you're here. Would you like to address the board tonight, or?
Sure. I'm Jim Landigan, president of JB Landigan and Company, Inc. I did not have the benefit of reading any of that or having access to that information prior to this meeting, so it's a little bit difficult to address a lot. But in general, I can address the three highlighted items that I was notified that were concerns by town council or by the Board of Health. The one being the noise, two being the aquifer protection district, and number three being the processing of materials. There might have been four, did you?
The fourth one was just whether or not the planning board or the Board of Appeals should be the special granting authority.
Okay, okay. So I'll take the noise level, which is governed by the DEP, and I, I don't, I've, I've sent it to you, and it is basically, you take the ambient noise level, which is the noise level that exists now on, under normal conditions, and it can't be increased by 10 decibels at property line. It's a state bylaw. So whatever noise level they're concerned at, there's already a rule governing noise level. And it's a state rule, and the Board of Health enforces it, and he's enforced it on projects and, and that we've been working on, and we've abided by them and, and put up whatever mitigation that was requested. So there is a noise bylaw already, and I know, I guess they're working on a town bylaw regarding noise. Number two, they talked about aquifer protection. There's also a bylaw, the town has a bylaw protecting the aquifer, which I believe it reads, you can disturb or 10% of the property or 2,500 square feet. A very, very strict bylaw. 10% of your property you can disturb if you're in the aquifer. It can't get any more, well, in my opinion, it can't get much more strict than that, or... So that was the second one, they, the third one...
Well, there was a concern about materials and the processing of materials.
Material processing, thank you. And I agree with that. There is a great concern with people bringing in asphalt, brick, and concrete to their sites where it's, but it's illegal in Massachusetts to bring it to a site other than a certified landfill or a asphalt batching plant without a site assessment. It doesn't get, it gets a little bit technical, but every property out there, unless it's an asphalt batching plant, or in an approved landfill, or they have a site assessment approved to bring it onto that property, cannot bring asphalt, brick, or concrete and process that material on the job. That being said, properties in a limited industrial district are not allowed to do that by state law currently. So I, I, people do it all the time. People bring in their asphalt and their brick, and that's not something we would do without a license or a permit. And it's not legal without a license and permit. So those three concerns are, are already addressed by current, current rules and regulations or current bylaws, so I...
And so, with all, with all due respect, when, I personally, when I have, when I hear from town council and the director of the Board of Health raising these issues, and I'm not disputing that these may be covered under state regulations, but when I hear the people that we have to rely on for advice expressing concerns about, you know, these very same issues, I, it's pause for, for concern on my part that we haven't addressed all of these issues in sufficient detail. And so I, you know, I think we tried to work with you to get this done as quickly as possible.
Undoubtedly.
And I think as, because we did that, we're now getting the comments back that we would normally get earlier in the process prior to actually drafting the bylaw, and we, it's, it's almost half-baked at this point, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of our ability to bring that to town meeting and get a favorable vote from town meeting. In terms of our ability to bring that to town meeting and get a favorable vote from town meeting, so.
I agree with you, John. I do, I think you've done a great job trying to work with this, but I do agree that probably takes another, another few goes at it.
Yeah, some more due diligence, I think, would be required to address these concerns. And, you know, as you point out, if they're already covered by state regulations, maybe that's one thing. If they need to be put in our own bylaw so that we have local enforcement, you know, maybe that needs to be considered as well. Anyways, that's, that's my viewpoint, and obviously we'll hear from the other members of the board. Anyone, Mr. Souza?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we sympathize with your plight that you were up against and realized that we didn't have a niche in town for contractor yards. Unfortunately, I think we may have oversimplified the process and we're seeing some comments now that we can't ignore and we've got to see them through. And unfortunately, we won't make the, I can't go ahead and recommend a bylaw with this many doubts from people who are experienced in dealing with issues that are regulated, currently regulated, and apparently not well enough for their needs or experience they've had with other operations in town. And unfortunately, you're in a business where there's a lot of bad apples, you know? And give everybody else a bad reputation, which may not be the reputation you have. I've heard nothing but fine things about your operation and you yourself, but unfortunately, as you know, you're in an industry that's got a lot of bad apples in it, so.
Thank you, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Souza.
Anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Toomey.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that as a member of the planning board for quite a while, I've been appointed to the soils board, and I've worked with Chris Michel pretty closely. He was our inspector. And even for the sites that had a soils board permit and a bond and everything, we've had to go after a good percentage of them for storing things that they're not supposed to have there. Now, that shouldn't reflect on you or on these contractor yards, but it is very hard to regulate for a town. And, you know, we're limited as to how much money we have for lawyers and for, you know, inspections and all that. And what Chris Michel is worried about here is the same stuff that I hear and see him dealing with on the soils board. So I don't think he pulled this out of the sky. I think it's from experience that he's talking. So I have to agree with John. We, we need to pass this zoning law, this article, for not just the people who do a good job, but the people, all the people. And so if we have this many holes that both our legal person, Anthony Savistano, and Chris Michel, the person from the director of the Board of Health, and others, people that are dealing with that third letter that we got from Gloria Bancroft. She's got quite a bit of experience with the Cecil Smith stuff, so. I know that these fears are real, and I know that we have to put the language in to have the check ends and balances so that other people can't misuse and abuse it.
I would just like to ask Mr. Landigan, I know you're a resident of town. I know you had a unsuccessful attempt to repurpose the old Westport Road property. And you came to us and, you know, we're trying to work with you and saw that was a need. Apparently, we're not going to get there for this town meeting. And I thought I recall you saying you were under some time restraints on finding a home for your facility and you may look, have to look outside the town. Is that, or you may pursue a variance? You mind if I ask you what your path may be? I'm assuming the board is not going to vote this to be presented at town meeting. So are you going to pursue a variance for a site? Are you going to pursue a site outside the town? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. What I'm looking for is regardless of what your decision is, whether you tell us this evening, if we continue to pursue this for another town meeting, can we rely on your advice, advice and expertise and on what you think should be in the bylaw?
Absolutely. Mr. Souza, I don't, I've been in town since nineteen eighty-six, I think. I brought up my kids in town. I do, I think I do a lot for the town compared to some people, maybe not, but we're doing the best we can. We donate a lot, our time, our energy. I've coached in town and improved the grounds and baseball fields and parking lots all the time for free. I care about town Dartmouth. I'm not here for a quick hit. My first choice is the town of Dartmouth. We do have thirty-five employees that we're looking for our headquarters. Currently, we have, we're spread out right now, our yards in Marion. And it's a very neat yard and it's a very clean yard. And so much so, at the last meetings with the ZBA, one of the landlords, I mean, one of the abutters went around trying to find neighbors to talk about our property. And he didn't, the neighbors didn't even know we were there. So we are a pretty quiet operation. Ninety-five percent of our work is done on Route four ninety-fives or commercial sites all over the state. So we don't do a lot of work in our yard. But I am under some time pressure, just I want to grow our company. We're growing, we're growing from four million to ten million a year. And there's a demand that we need to find a headquarters. Can I wait till fall meeting? I can try. And I'm, I can definitely say I'm not, I'm not giving up on the town of Dartmouth. Right now, there is no land in town that meets the zoning need of a contractor yard, zero land. Grandfather, unless it's grandfathered. And I'm, I question any of those sites, so.
That includes land in the industrial zone?
There's, the only land in the town of Dartmouth that is in the industrial zone is the land in the New Bedford Industrial Park. And there. Number one, I don't want to speak out of turn, I don't think they allow contractor yards. Very strict bylaws there. And they might be full, the pot that's in Dartmouth, there may be no vacant land. So that is the only piece that's zoned, I believe, general industrial.
Yep.
So there's no land in town that is zoned for high use. But I, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate the board. I went home at the last meeting, told my wife, you know, typically you feel like a criminal at the meetings. People act like you're a criminal and I was humbled by how well the board respected me, so I appreciate that. And hopefully we'll be back.
Yeah, I'm sorry it didn't work out this time. And just while in the public hearing, I think probably the most reasonable thing is rather than recommending against us that we probably recommend withdrawal. And we'll discuss that after the public hearing, but I just wanted you to hear that. It's part of the public hearing so that we're not raising this after the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Toomey, you have something?
No, I don't have anything, but I'd just like to make sure that you understand that we've had to generate other zoning laws and it took several iterations of wording in order to get them tuned up enough that the town meeting would take a chance on us. And they expect us to do our homework. And if we came there with some questions not answered, they'd want to know, you know, how come you did it this way this time? Thank you for coming by and giving us the good idea, though.
Okay, thank you, yeah. We knew it was a long draw for the time, and we knew we had time constraints, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience or from the planning board? Okay, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Hanson, do you have anything?
No.
So will we continue this afterwards and work on it? Are we going to?
Well, actually, I think we should because, you know, Mr. Landigan has pointed out, is that, you know, we don't have a home for any contractor, you know? And, you know, it's not something I've, you know, any of us, I think, would appreciate living next to, but that's not what he's asking to be, next to a residence.
Right.
And.
So number nine is our priority list.
Yeah, I think we should add it to the priority list and try to do something for next town meeting. Work with Mr. Landigan and town council and Board of Health and try to come up with a reasonable bylaw that would allow this type of activity and reasonably restrict them.
Just so I understand the process, since I haven't been here for a withdrawal of an article, is it just as simple as writing a memo to the town administrator indicating our desires to have it withdrawn?
That's my impression, yes, most certainly when those are the ones.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to move on to Article A, which was our first article, which is a site plan review. And so is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on Article A? All right, so let's turn it over to the planning board. I just had a couple of comments on the very last page. Where it talks about the architectural aspects of the site plan review. I thought we had agreed on a couple of changes to this. One was that on item number one where it says the historical. My impression is that we decided to delete that term so that we're not necessarily looking at the historical character of the area. We're looking at the character of the surrounding neighborhood because this was primarily Route six.
I, we call, having that discussion, yes.
And then the, the other change I thought we agreed to was on item number three where it says and colors, that we would strike colors as one of the considerations.
I remember that, yes.
Yep, yep, I agree, yeah.
So those are my only two comments.
The word historical and the words and colors?
Yeah, so the and probably needs to go, oh, no, I guess it doesn't need to go anywhere else. Just needs to, the sentence needs to stop at windows.
Right, and, and back before number one, just removing the word historical.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not that we don't care about historical aspects of architecture. It's just that when I think of Route six, I don't typically think about matching the historical character of the area.
Yep.
Just take that word out, just enhancing the character.
Oh, and there's a missing period, but that probably doesn't need to be discussed in the public hearing. Okay, so any comments from the, the planning board on the site plan review, which has been in development for the past ten years?
And we received no comments on it.
Oh, no, we did, plenty of comments from the reviewers and from several people. We just discussed them all already.
Yeah, we've discussed them, but we've received no comments for the public hearing, is what I'm saying.
No, because I think we, we did it right with this. This is the way it should be done, unlike with the contractor yard and having to advertise for a legal ad that, you know, essentially was pointless tonight, but.
Mr. Souza? So as you put, you know, for ten years, we've been trying to do something with site plan review. Boy, when I think back, how many times we've debated page after page after page and try to come up with a, with a standard or something that's agreeable to everybody. It's been a long and difficult road, and I think I can speak for all of us. The final document, I'm very proud of. The final document, although there are many items in there that I personally may not agree with, some of our standards and numbers, but I think we all could say that. But in, the bottom line is it was something that I could live with because I realized how valuable the whole document is. I may not agree with, and I lobbied the board and so did other people, when they had a point that they wanted to change a number or emphasize something that, I mean, gotten what they want. Other people may have gotten, not gotten what they want, but it was a compromise. And I'm happy with the end results. It's something that I can live with and I think it's going to go, if passed that town meeting, will go a long way for the town of Dartmouth. I think it's long overdue. Dartmouth has always led the way in zoning, and I think we've fallen behind in the last few years. I'm ashamed to admit that a lot of towns around us have site plan review and had it for years, and we haven't. So I'm hoping we're successful on this one.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with, you know, your, your comment about us sort of falling behind because I think other communities, local communities have had site plan review for quite a while. And I think when we go to town meeting, we should have a list of those neighborhood communities that have town meeting, I'm sorry, they have site plan review already adopted so that people recognize that this is not something exotic that the town of Dartmouth is doing, that, you know, other towns already have this, and it's, it's working successfully for those towns. I, one of the things I was wondering about is whether we should schedule, try to schedule a meeting with the select board to, to present this. And, you know, probably requires a few PowerPoint slides for a presentation.
Yeah, I would, I would, I wouldn't have an issue with that. How much time do we have? When is town meeting, June?
June second, fourth, fifth, second.
Anyway, so we've got.
Early June.
Yeah, I guess we've got time.
I suggest we do because they're going to, they're going to go through these articles and make their comments. So if we can get to them before they have that meeting, then they, they'll have their questions answered, hopefully.
Seventh.
So.
John, I missed the last meeting. I know I had talked to you since the last meeting, but you had been to the finance committee.
Yes.
Have you reported back to the board on your experience with the finance committee?
No, it was just making the presentation, it was in and out.
I'm just curious if the board is interested in, in hearing that.
I certainly would.
How'd you make out at the finance committee?
Like I said, it was in and out presentation. I just read these reports that you see before you and that was it, they didn't take a vote.
Did they ask a lot of questions or?
Nope, I think the only question I remember on site plan review was, is there any additional costs to the applicant, which there isn't. Just regulations that are being changed, so. Nope, very, very quick, quick meeting with the FinCom.
So have you heard a recommendation that's been made yet by them?
No.
Who is their clerk? Do they have a clerk?
I don't know.
I wonder if there's any way you could track that on when they make a recommendation, what that, what that might be. I'd be curious to know what the vote is.
I doubt.
There's no clerk to report back to.
I, yeah, I'm wondering whether, I mean, if we're going to try to schedule a meeting with the select board, whether we, even though they've already heard John's pitch, whether the finance committee would benefit from that meeting as well? I mean, in terms of hearing more details about the proposal.
Make that suggestion when you speak to Mr. Questman on getting on their agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure his reaction will be, you already spoke with them, what more are you going to tell them that you didn't tell the select board?
Well, but it doesn't sound like you told them a lot.
Well, I explained the report that you have before you, so if we feel that there's things in there that I didn't go over, let's, we can talk about that.
Well, maybe we should defer until after the public hearing is closed and we actually go through the report.
Sure.
I'm just surprised that the FinCom didn't have a lot of questions.
Well, hopefully that's a good thing.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
I was pleasantly surprised when I spoke to John that there wasn't a lot of questions. And hopefully that's a sign that all the work we've put into this, all the homework we've put into this, all the compromise we've put into this, that it's a bylaw that most people can agree with.
Yeah, and I would hope so as well. I guess if I was presented with twenty-seven pages of a new bylaw, I might have a hard time digesting that. And so I'm hoping that people have actually put some time into reviewing what it says.
In the past, they, they haven't been afraid to dive into it, so I'm hoping that it's a good sign. I may be wrong, but.
No, I hope so as well, yeah. Any other thoughts on Article A? All right, so let's move on to Article B, Mr. Hanson.
And Article B is the change to the non-conforming uses bylaw where we are now going to be prohibiting changing from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use?
And so I noticed that the changes that we talked about the last time have been incorporated here. And I'm just curious whether you've received any feedback on this from anyone?
None other than town council, which signed off on. None other than Town Council, which signed off on this language.
Any discussion on Article B? Alright, so that's, those are the three zoning articles. Um, how do you feel about closing the public hearing?
I assume.
Second?
Discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So, thank you for everyone in the audience for participating in the public hearing. As well as the Planning Board, and so we'll resume the Planning Board's regular meeting, which takes us to, I believe, action on these articles.
I move that we make a recommendation on Article A and B? Or do you want them separately?
A positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation on A and B, I'm sorry, positive recommendation on A and B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alrighty, any discussion on these positive recommendations? I'm sorry, you, you suggested something, and I said, let's wait, and here we are.
Oh, yeah, just the report itself for the article, so I'll just read it real quickly. Article A would amend the zoning bylaws by replacing the current Section sixteen off-street parking plan regulations with a new Section sixteen site plan review. Proposed changes include an expanded purpose section, expanded applicability section, revised parking standards for large retail projects, allowance for reduction of parking spaces via special permit, new standards for sidewalks, crosswalks, walk-through zones, outdoor seating, roadway improvements, lighting and low-impact development drainage techniques, traffic study requirements, revised landscaping standards, and an advisory architectural design guide. And Article B would amend Section three B dot one oh five, expansion or change of nonconforming uses other than one or two family residential uses. The purpose of the change is to close a loophole in the prohibition of used variances. The allowance of a new nonconforming use is effectively allowing a use that is prohibited. Therefore, this amendment should be made so the intent of prohibiting used variances can be adhered to. That's it.
Alrighty, any discussion on staff's recommendation? Mrs. Susan?
I'm, I'm, just a simple word to sound a little bit more positive. You know, we have a Section sixteen, and now we're looking to propose site plan review. So a lot of these standards that were in there, and I like to say we've improved them. So why not make a statement of that on the third sentence down, expand applicable sections, revise and improve parking standards? I think we improved them, it wasn't just a revision, we spent a lot of time on those standards, and I, and I think we improved numbers and quantities.
So where exactly is that changed? What's lined down?
The, the third sentence down on the second paragraph.
Proposed changes include, is that the sentence?
Yes. Revised and improved parking standards, so add.
Got it.
And then, and then new standards for sidewalk, I, I like to say new and improved standards for sidewalks. Improve lighting and low-impact development drainage technique, uh, roadway impro, no, wait a minute. No, that would be, so new and improved standards for sidewalks, sidewalks and.
Understood.
I, I, we improved everything we had in Session sixteen.
Yeah, and revised and, and revised and.
Positive change, and we should be, and we should be stating that.
I wonder if it should be.
And revised and improved landscaping standards.
Yep.
I wonder if it should be organized in, in that way, so that all of the improvements of Session sixteen are listed first, and then, you know, additional standards are listed in a separate sentence?
Sure, I, you know.
Yeah, this was done in chronological order, so, so, you know, obviously the purpose section is first, the applicability section, the second, architectural design guide was last, so that, just so you understand where this list came from.
Yeah. And I, the road, no, I'm sorry, the traffic study requirements, that's for large projects as well, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's based on the type of traffic that's being generated, so you assume it's large, but it's, they, they have to demonstrate what the traffic is of the proposed use in order to determine if traffic study is required. Remember, if they increased, if the level of service went from a C to a D, or if the trips it generated increased by ten percent, I believe.
Right, 'cause the fast food is relatively a small
Right.
Building a footprint, but yet it could possibly increase traffic dramatically.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I, I could just see someone objecting to traffic study requirements, like going into just, do some minimal changes to my parking lot.
Right.
And have to do a traffic study, so obviously that's not the case, but.
Right.
And, and so maybe when we have the meeting, assuming we have a meeting with the Select Board, I think maybe we need to elaborate on some of these points to make sure that people recognize that maybe it's, it, the scope of the, the changes are not, they're not overbearing to, to people who are, to applicants that are coming before the Planning Board.
We didn't reinvent the wheel with site plan review here.
No, certainly not.
We've made some improvements to Section sixteen.
Right, but we've never had traffic impacts before, have we? So, that would be a new improvement. Alright.
Well, we got a traffic study for the
A special permit.
On a special permit tonight, so I mean, we've, it's, I know it's a special permit, but we have had traffic studies, it's not like we, we haven't.
We just haven't been able to require them.
Right.
Alright, anything else on these two articles? Hearing none, all those in favor of staff's recommendation, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, we're ready to rock and roll on those two.
They have to vote to withdraw C, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, is there a motion to withdraw C?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on withdrawing C? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Susan?
I'll just say that I feel that based on those three letters that we got, one from our lawyer, one from our Health Department Director, and one from the general public, who's had to deal with materials, I think that this was necessary for us to withdraw it, only because we do need to do the homework to add parameters and maximums and minimums on the materials, et cetera, and they brought up very good points.
Yep, and I, I think the lesson we keep learning with these zoning articles is that unless it's something very, very simple, it needs time, and so to try to do it at the last minute just doesn't work. Alright, any additional discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And so Article C will be a recommendation to withdraw. Alrighty, so.
Well, can I just ask a, a simple logistics question?
Sure.
We're making a recommendation for it to be withdrawn, who actually decides that it is withdrawn?
Select Board sets the warrant, so it would be.
It's them. Now, if they decide to go forward with this anyhow, can they do that?
I think you can't go to town meeting without a positive recommendation.
Yeah, we have to get a positive recommendation from us.
I'm sorry, the only article can't be moved forward without a positive recommendation from the.
Okay, alright, well.
A, a recommendation.
A recommendation, I'm sorry.
So we're not making a recommendation, we're asking that it be. So I think you're absolutely right, it could not go to town meeting. Alright, so that was item number seven, and now we're at item number eight, which is the complete streets policy. Which we started to review at our last meeting, and I think at least a couple of us wanted to have an opportunity to review it, spend some more quality time with it. And, at least, I tried to spend a little bit more time on, with it, but found that it was still a little confusing. Yes, Mrs. Susan?
So I didn't have the privilege of seeing it at the last meeting, and I actually didn't read the street policy till late this afternoon, when I realized it was in my old pack. And I didn't have the privilege of the last meeting, I, I think my understanding is this was drafted by Deborah, maybe? John, is that correct?
Well, it was a, a state model, she just basically downloaded the state model policy that is required if we want to obtain any of the monies.
So, what was, was presented at the last meeting then, are we looking to approve this? Are, are we looking to be, to draft a policy similar to this, and that would be our charge?
No, basically, the complete streets policy is a policy that the state, it, it allows the towns to adopt, and if you do adopt it, and then you are eligible for applying for funds to make your streets complete, which means they're eligible for all sorts of users, being pedestrian, bicycle, or auto. So, the BPW Planning Board, and ultimately the Board of Selectmen, need to adopt this same complete street policy, which, as you have read, I'm sure, says that we will have all of our streets for all of our users, and going forward, then we can adopt, or I'm sorry, we can apply for money to reconstruct our roads for all of these users.
And I think we also have the benefit of, I'm sorry, who was the engineer that was here? Alan Haru?
Yes.
And he has since provided us with, I think, potential street improvements that could be done with funding from this policy, right?
Right.
I mean, is that the right context?
Yep, absolutely.
Funding if we had the policy, not from, the policy isn't gonna get us funding.
No, we need the.
The policy is adopted, and from my understanding currently, would allow you to apply for grants.
Right.
So.
Yes. So we would.
I'm sorry, so I haven't tried to read the document, I'm, I'm really having a tough time understanding it, whether it's so it's a basic policy, for example, you know, the title's complete street policies, and then they have some, you know, vision and a purpose, or core commitment, exemptions, best practices, and when I read like vision and purpose, there seems to be very boilerplate stuff, and then there seems to be something inserted specifically to Dartmouth. So, was that by Deborah? So, I'm, I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
This whole, the, everything, everything in here is straight from the state's model policy, and the only things in here that she was looking for input on was bolded.
So, but they're sitting, you know, like there's italicized words in here. And the, and the vision and purpose, right in the middle of that first paragraph, there's a whole sentence in there, italicized. And it's, it has the word Dartmouth in it, so, and even then, a few sentences down.
Right, I think she's just indicating that that was a sentence she changed because she put the word Dartmouth in it.
But then you go down two more sentences, and the purpose of the town of Dartmouth's complete street standards, and it mentions Dartmouth a few times, so. It would have been nice to see what the original policy was, what her changes are. And then, what is she asking, or what, that we approve it as is, approve it with suggestions?
She, she's only looking for any comment, well, obviously any comments you have, but specifically comments that are, are, are bolded, which I.
So maybe I, so, my thought is, is that we have, because it's confusion, at least it's confusing to me, that we have, maybe have Deborah come before us, and if she could present the original draft that she worked from, and how she came up with her draft, and maybe we could understand it better, and what her goal and objective is. And what does this mean for us in terms of dollars, potential dollars, potential grants?
Four hundred thousand dollars, I believe that's what Alan had said at the last meeting, per year, that we could be eligible for.
Per year, is that, you know, the, you know, the state is famous for redigging, you know, it may start out at four hundred thousand dollars, it will be four hundred thousand dollars in five years, and now if every town adopts the street policy.
Is that per town?
And.
Per municipality?
That's what Alan had said at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But then there's no harm in adopting the policy, if you, if we don't get the money, then it doesn't matter, so.
No.
Yeah, but it also, it also gets into the tip policy, you can get tip money and stuff like that, too, gives you a little bit more, more.
So those are the kind of details that I'd like to hear, know about, and, and, and get educated on, right now, I'm not, I'm, I'm just not up to speed.
Has she, has she presented this to the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting?
No, she's waiting, Board of Public Works already approved it, and then we're next, and the Select Board would be the last.
What about having her present it to the two boards together? And save time?
I think, I think the Planning Board is, it's a little bit more involved in what the Selectmen have to be, and it, and adopt, this means more to us than I think the
Okay.
Board of Selectmen, and I'd like.
DPW has approved it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, no comments.
Do you know why there's so much stress on all income levels?
I'm sorry?
There's such a focus on income levels, so for example, under, on page one, core commitment, the last sentence, all users including, include users of all ages, abilities, and income levels. And so that term is like splattered throughout this.
Yeah, typical environmental justice language that you see on all state documents, whether it's open space and rec plans, complete street policies, they just wanna make sure we're protecting our lowest income individuals, so they say all income level, so we're not specifically pointing them out.
We're not specifically saying moderate or low income, we're saying all incomes.
Exactly.
Well, when would we do that relative to streets? I, I guess it's the connection to streets is what I'm not understanding.
What they don't want is you to expend your money in your higher-income neighborhoods.
Oh, I see.
So you gotta spend it in all neighborhoods.
Right, exactly.
Alright.
So again, this bylaw, or this policy is the state-adopted policy that several towns have already adopted, Acton being one, Reading being another, and the items in bold, which the first one you see here is whether or not we want to exempt any roads in town from this policy, Acton exempted State Route Two throughout the town. And the second bolded item was the Town's Interdepartmental Reviewer Group. Again, that's a bolded item, because if we wanted to include any other groups or entities, we could, but that was the suggestion there, that are monthly reviewers, and then the last item, that's bolded, the very last sentence about an evaluation report issued every three years, and the bolded number there is five, whether or not we wanted to increase that, so. From my discussions with her, these items in here are all required to meet the policy, so then we're eligible for it, we need to have a vision, core commitment, exemptions if we wish, best practices, implementation, and evaluation.
So, for an example, the last page, evaluation of effectiveness, the town would develop performance measures to periodically assess the rate success and effectiveness of implementing the town of Dartmouth, oh wait, maybe it's not here, okay, the next sentence. A committee of relevant stakeholders designated by the town administrator.
That's state.
I have a tough time, is it, but.
It's, it's coming out of them.
There are towns that don't have a town administrator. So, you know, is that statement something she inserted in there, or is that on the, those are the kind of things, I'm reading this, and I was like, how can that be, you know, because every town doesn't have an administrator, they, some call it a manager, some call it a a council or a mayor, or, so why does it say town administrator here?
Oh, it seemed to me that that, you know, was.
And it would be easy answer if we saw what she started with first, and.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think she, you know, used any latitude to change things in here that would not be appropriate, obviously.
I'm not saying she's been inappropriate, I'm just, I'm just curious, just why, why the state would, would say town administrator, when not every town, so if we don't have a town administrator, we can't take advantage of the street policy?
That, that has to be personalized, because the sentence above that talks about the town of Dartmouth as well.
And this town, yeah, in this town, we have an administrator, in some towns, it would be the Board of Selectmen, 'cause there's no administrator, or maybe in some towns, it's gonna be the DPW.
Yeah, but I guess she's personalized this document beyond the italics and the bold, right?
Well, again, I think she personalized it to the things that make sense, obviously the word Dartmouth makes sense in here, because that's the town we live in, and town administrator makes sense, 'cause that's the form of government we have, so.
Yeah, no. I don't think we're suggesting that it doesn't make sense.
Right, well, I, I mean, I'm, obviously can't speak for her, but I don't think she did.
Well, my question is, is, you know, if we're on, and I didn't really wanna get into it this evening, but for that example, is I'm uncomfortable with one person, whether it's a town administrator, may, having that much power, saying, well, I'm going to dictate who that committee is, and I'm gonna make sure that some ways that's gonna put forth and I'm gonna make sure that some ways that's gonna put forth my agenda. I've got an issue with that. I want a diverse committee, made up of different agendas, to look at future decisions, not a committee that's made up of one person's agenda.
Yeah, I think the last meeting, we talked about potentially having a representative group of people. And I don't, I don't remember what the specific discussion was, but, you know, someone from the Planning Board, someone from the Select Board.
Yeah, and I think that's where the suggestion of the Town's Interdepartmental Reviewer Group came from, up in the top, under implementation. So, anywhere in this section that we're talking about implementation, that it be brought to the reviewers group, which is made up of the town engineer, DPW superintendent, health agent, conservation agent, building official, myself, fire, and the town administrator.
Was that, was that language?
So, under implementation, she has the bolded under there, Town's Interdepartmental Reviewer Group, so.
Right.
I read that to mean, in this section, this is where the Town's Interdepartmental Reviewer Group would be inserted into the sections that refer to the town administrator, not adopting, appointing individuals. Because it's in this section as well.
You gotta remember, that last paragraph only has to do with studying and determining the frequency, and making sure that everything is assessed right. This is just an evaluation. Whereas up further up, it's the people that would be involved in actually doing. The bottom part is evaluating the top, that further up would be
Right.
the committee that actually does the work.
Yeah, so, so you see under the implementation section, the second paragraph, where it says, "A committee of relevant stakeholders designated by the town administrator shall implement this initiative," so it's her suggestion that it's the reviewer group.
Right.
Which, to me, that makes sense.
So that's where there's some latitude. I mean, it's those kind of things.
Right, and that's, that's why it's bolded, she wants to see, in this implementation section, do you wanna see the reviewer group?
But again, that comment about designated by the town administrator, why does the town administrator sole responsibility to make that decision, whether it's the what committee it is, or what makeup of the committee is? Why is it only the town administrator? Why not, why isn't it a select board? Why isn't it a more than one individual making that call?
Right, so, so, I, so the way, if the board agrees with her suggestion of the Town's Interdepartmental Reviewer Group, it would, it would, that last sentence would then say, "The Town's Interdepartmental Reviewer Group will be, will implement this initiative." So you would take out the part about the town administrator, because he doesn't appoint those individuals. I assume at some point you appointed the Planning Director to that committee, and the subsequent boards appointed their committees, their, their representatives to that?
I don't recall.
Yeah, it just sort, just sort of happened, that the department heads met.
Yeah, and it was probably within the authority of the executive administrator to organize that group.
I think it was organized before he came.
Well, maybe not him, but his predecessor.
Yeah.
I mean, he is, that person is, that role is responsible for the efficient administration of town government, so.
I, I should've started my, I'm very intrigued and glad, I think it's a great concept. And if we're gonna develop a policy like this and capture some grant money, I'm all in favor of it. I just wanna make sure that we're doing it right, and we're doing it within the best interests of the town.
So, I mean, it sounds like the reviewer group makes sense to this board. The exemptions, the first, is, is there any roads in town that we think should be exempted from this policy? I mean, obviously, State Route Two was historical road in Acton, some reason why they wanted it exempted.
Right, and that's the kind of stuff I like to hear from Deborah, why is that Acton chose not to?
No, that's, that's, yeah, that's the reason, I mean, when we spoke to the consultant about this from DPW, who, you know, not that they came up with it, but they, they told the town about this draft policy, they specifically said, "Do you have any historical streets in town, you know, that you would want this applied toward?"
No, I thought it was they were, weren't applying it to.
Yeah, right, but you, that you wanna apply the exemption to.
Yeah.
So why would they apply exemption to that?
Because it's historical status, yeah, the Mohawk Trail, they don't wanna see bicycle lanes and sidewalks on.
So do you lose control over what roads get upgraded then, if you adopt this policy?
No, you can put, you put them in here if you don't want them to be done.
But if you're always in control, why would you need to put in what roads get done or not when you adopt the policy? If you're always in control, that if I receive four hundred thousand dollars, and I'm in control where that money goes, why do I need to dictate right from the get-go that this road and this road is exempted?
Because you get, you get extra points when you specify that in the approval process.
Well, I, I think what it is, is if, if you, if you apply, I mean, I guess it is sort of redundant. You, you really don't need to, because you wouldn't apply under this pot of money, that's what you're saying, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, my, my recommendation would be you don't have any exemptions, I don't think we have any roads in town that you would wanna exempt, we don't have.
Well, why would we, why would we wanna expend tax dollar monies on private roads? Or common driveways?
Where we wouldn't be applying.
And that's, those are kind of things, is, you know, what are we really adopting here? So, we adopting some standard that, for an example, Smith Mills, Hicksville Village just did a very small section at the, at the intersection, they had some upgrade in sidewalks that the town paid for.
Yep.
And the town did that, I believe, on their own. They determined the width, the material, you know, direction of the sidewalks. If we adopt this policy, is the state gonna designate, or it has to be, you know, it has to be, you know, twelve inches of concrete, it always has to be eleven feet wide, it always has to have this, it always has.
Yeah, you're gonna have to meet state standards.
You know, it wouldn't, you couldn't make a sidewalk work there. Same thing with Elm Street, Elm Street ended up being a very narrow sidewalk. So if we adopt the policy, do we have to adol, adopt their standards, and what are those standards?
It doesn't say anything about state standards.
Right, so, those are the kind of questions I have.
Yeah, no, I'm left wondering, what is all this?
Yeah, right.
Other than papulum.
When I read the principles, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but, "Complete Street Principles include the development and implementation of projects in a context-sensitive manner in which project implementation is sensitive to the community's physical, economic, and social setting. The context-sensitive approach to process and design includes a range of goals by considering stakeholder and community values on a, on a level plane with the project need." What the hell does that mean? No, really.
It means it's a state policy, that's what it means.
Because that's coming from an attorney, they can interpret everything.
No, really, I mean.
I had a tough time interpreting it.
We could parse this for hours and come up with some, some meaning out of it, but it just seems like it is so poorly written that you don't know what it is you're signing up for.
Exactly, yep, I agree. But we always can say, "No, thank you." Oh, can we revise it? If Deborah's taking the latitude to revise some errors, could we scratch language like that? I don't know.
I don't know.
No, according to her, the language in here is pretty specific, and if you want, you want access to the four hundred K.
Well, so there's, the, the, the cover sheet says, "Model Policy Ten Elements Scoring."
Right, so, so looking at those ten things, they need to be in.
They need to be here, so, so John's question, exceptions, where does the policy not apply? Clearly, clearly list exceptions, no inappropriate exceptions, extra points when you specify in the approval process. So, I mean, clearly, the state wants you to consider exceptions, whether you have any or not, I guess. Doesn't really matter if you get a point.
Yeah, we, we have exceptions in here, we might not have a specific road.
Hot and Hill Road.
I'll buy that. There you go, we've considered the exceptions, and we've documented them.
You know, and I mean, this, this includes, okay, you know, a good example is, it's Chapter Ninety, funds, it's town improvement grants, transportation improvement, the tips, all of these, you're gonna have to meet state guidelines. So, I mean, you are gonna have to meet state guidelines to get this money. I, I can almost guarantee you that.
Okay, well, let's get an answer to that, and, you know, so, okay, if we have a project like we did at Elm Street in Hicksville, we can't use that money.
Right here.
But because, but because we may use it on Slocum Road, and we save money from Slocum Road, we would have therefore have money
To do the other ones.
To go the other one, so it's, I, I would never say, "Let's not do it because of that." It's just information I'd like to know, signing up into it, what does it really mean?
So should we list an exception as someplace we know we can't use it anyway? Elm Street, for example, if there's any Smithneck Road, I'd hate to see trees cut down both sides.
And then, my next question is, is whatever ever happened, and I, you know, Elm Street may not be a poor example, but if Elm Street, the sidewalk that was recently put in is very narrow, but if there was ever a road that could be widened, if Elm Street was widened, that we took it taken, a sidewalk
Yeah.
is doable under state standards.
Right.
But yet, if we named it as an exception, we would be ineligible to the sidewalks, you know.
Just do it, okay.
I, I think the meeting with Deborah would be very useful.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone disagree with that?
Is there a timeframe, Joan, in this? Is this time-sensitive that if we don't sign up for it by a certain date?
Yeah, I believe they wanted to get it done by the end of May.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
I'm not talking about sign-sensitive date for them, but from the state level, that is, the door closes forever?
No, that's the state, that's, that's.
This year at this date?
No, when I said the end of May, that's, that's the state.
State.
They, they specifically list when you need to go through all these processes, when you can apply for the money, when you have to adopt this policy, which obviously has to happen before you apply for the money, but, yes, May.
So do we have to wait for, for next May to do it again, or?
If we don't get it done by the end of this May?
Right.
It would appear so, yes, because then you would miss the deadline, because they need to review, make sure that you've adopted this policy.
Available to us next, next May, you think, and well, that's a question.
And so you don't know.
You know, who knows, like you said, they could rename the money next year, yeah.
You could do away with the whole program, right?
Absolutely, just like they, how many times have they cut CPA funding over the years, you know, it's that type of deal.
Yeah, well, the thing is, is that, just like with CP, the CP fundings, that the towns that got in immediately got more money, and then as the money started, then, this is gonna be the same type of project, you know, the sooner, the sooner you get in on it, if it's a good project, then you'll get more money. But as they, more, more towns jump on the bandwagon, you know, that four hundred thousand will go down to two, will go down to one, will go down to, you know.
Yeah, so can we get her here next week, next, next week, next meeting?
I will ask.
And Mr. Chairman Duke, has, John, you know if Alan Haru's committee's been, had a chance to review this? Do they wanna comment on this at all, or?
Yeah, I believe that was part of the correspondence that Alan's been, you know, peppering our inboxes with, that Pathways Committee has reviewed this, and that's why he's come up with all, or his committee's come up with all of these potential projects that we can utilize the money for.
Elm Street.
Absolutely, that's one of them.
In the village of Elm Street.
That's one of them, yeah.
Yeah, when he came before us with the, the village, village, vision, this is when he talked about this.
There's Reed Road, there's Gulf Road, you guys got this right, Russell's Mills? Gulf, Gulf Road again.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get the sense from both the BPW and the Pathways Committee, that they're, they're ready to get this policy adopted, so we can apply for that chunk of change.
The sooner the better, let's get Deborah in here.
I mean, who can argue with a complete street policy? Why would you wanna have an incomplete policy, right?
The other thing we need to do, we gotta get back on the agenda, is we gotta get the open space thing.
We're waiting for comments back from Serp Ed, that was the direction last time, to send it to Bill, and he said he would work on it, and.
Did that go out, by the way? That letter?
Yeah, oh yeah, emailed Bill the next day, that's what the board wanted, and Bill called me right back, he said, "We will work on it, no problem," so.
Because I know he's waiting for the approval. He's waiting for the approval for several grants that Dartmouth wants to apply for.
But he recognizes that he owes us an answer, right? Yeah.
That's what he said.
All right, so that was Complete Streets, priority list, item number nine.
Do we wanna go forward, I see that it's ten o'clock, I don't know how up, how detailed we're gonna get this evening, but.
We can, we can get this done, can't we? So we just need to list the contract yards here as another option. So, how have we done this in the past, I forget, just go one, two, three, or?
That's what I recall, but, you know, certainly, things change, things come up, and items that were number one, two, and three have changed over the course of time as new.
Site plan is think is state, no, maybe not. We started on, on the sign bylaw as our number two priority. I don't know if that still makes sense or not. We actually have a draft at this point, right, that we?
We do, yeah, we're waiting for Town Council to review that draft from Serp Ed.
All right.
The items that you saw, ICCD on that, asking for an update on the subdivision regulations and the cell tower bylaw, which the cell tower bylaw indicated we should review on our own first.
Who told us we need to review the cell bylaw on our own first?
Town Council.
Oh, we don't know what's, we need to review.
He said that he's not going to dictate policy, that would be our charge.
But didn't he tell us that we were in violation of the state law?
Yes.
So we need to know what the state law is first.
And it's a vicious cycle.
I mean, so. I'm sorry, but in order to review a cell tower bylaw that says we're in violation of the state law, I need to know what we're in violation of first.
That's the whirlpool I've been in for the last fourteen months, Laura Hahn.
So I wonder if maybe we should come up with priorities and then have another meeting with Town Council, and make sure we're of the same mind in terms of what the approach is. Because I, you know, that's a legitimate concern, I, I, I think there are probably legal deficiencies. And, and I think his point is well-taken, that we, as a board, need to formulate what our policy guidelines are, so that if we think it's a good policy to encourage cell towers on top of municipal facilities, that we express those preferences. I'm not, I'm just using it as an example.
I know what you're saying, yeah, good job.
And then he would then comment on the legality of what we've come up with, so, I, I don't know if this, it is a catch twenty-two. And maybe there's a better way to approach this, I don't know what it is.
Well, can you, I, I mean, that's, I don't know what that's gonna fall on here, but just out of curiosity, can we get a copy of what the new state bylaw is?
Well, I don't think it's a state bylaw, he's talking about.
Case, I think it's case law, isn't it?
Right, yeah.
And maybe actually federal.
Not state law, federal law and.
Oh, federal law, I'm sorry, you're right.
So there've been a number of cases over the years that have been decided, and that constitutes a body of law that's not, you know, it's not part of a statute or a regulation.
Written somewhere, A B C, yeah.
And so he would be aware of those, and would like to apply those to a bylaw that we have, to a draft that we've come up with that reflects our policy preferences.
I mean, as far as I know, the policy preferences that he's looking for us to come up with are the locations of cell towers, like the zoning districts, that we would want to see them or not see them in.
Yeah, maybe setbacks, perhaps.
I mean, I, I think we talked about this at one of the meetings that you had previously brought this up, Joel, that we had forwarded, I had forwarded him a draft bylaw, well, it wasn't a draft for, for me, it was a bylaw that I wrote in a previous town, and yeah, obviously, it already passed muster with the AG's offices, you know, tried and true in another jurisdiction, so if there's any federal cases that it was in violation of, we would've heard about it, so the only options that were left to decide in that bylaw for this town would be which zoning districts. I think we had just limited it to commercial and industrial zoning districts.
Yeah, so maybe we're making this too complicated, and it needs to be.
Right, so I mean, I could just bring that forward, and we could talk about those very things, setbacks and zoning districts.
Yeah, so that's assuming that we want to make that a priority. And so, do we have a nomination for the first, the number one priority?
Well, I, I think the signs are already ninety percent done, correct? Seventy-five to ninety? No?
Well, Serp Ed gave us a draft, and we forwarded it to Town Council for their review.
Mm-hmm.
But didn't we already discuss it to some extent?
A majority of it, not all of it, but.
No, not all of it.
Got three different versions here, so.
Yeah.
We have discussed it.
That's right.
We have.
Just based on the number of versions, right, that's evidence.
Yeah, I don't think we ever finished going through it, because the site plan review took precedent when we started getting the comments.
I'd like to see us finish something, I mean.
I would too.
Not with these things off.
The question with that is, is do we review that in further detail without Town Council's comment? The question with that is, is do we review that in further detail without town council's comments? I'd hate to review something, agree to a bunch of things, and then find out that fifty percent of it is in violation of the Supreme Court law.
So basically.
Or case law.
That's right, that was a legal question.
We should, we should keep it in the top, but put it aside until we hear back.
Yeah, and maybe, and I really do think it's a good idea that we sit down with town council.
Right.
And get, you know, face-to-face time with them so that we can express our concerns, like the one that, you know, you brought up, Laurie, about the, uh, the cell towers. So there's, anyone have any objection with that as number one, the signs? All right, so number two?
The, um, the state road gateway zone. Refresh my memories, that the south side of Route Six that we discussed in our last meeting, uh, from?
I believe from Slocum Road to the New Bedford Line on Route Six.
That's, okay.
East side.
Right.
Okay.
And so which one of these is the mixed-use district west or north, is it north?
South side of Route Six?
Yeah, the, the Westport side of Walmart. What would that be?
That's the.
Walmart side of Route Six, or the?
That's the retail corridor study.
I, I think that's one of the things we were, we talked about in terms of, you know, should we consider what we did in Bliss Corner as a model, even though it wouldn't be exactly the same, but is there some application of that principle for that area?
That would be the, 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 um.
Non-big-box area.
The non-big-box area.
Yeah.
Right.
Wasn't it officially called like the LID Aquifer Study, is that another name for it?
Yeah, I think it's been called a number of things, yeah, I think you're right.
But we are talking about the Wal.
Yeah, that's funny right there.
The, the Walgreens side, the, um, the landscaper that survives, it's there.
Yeah, right, the motel side.
The motel side, let's call it the motel side.
That's easy to remember.
Yes, that, that I'd like to see, um, that would be great, as number one or two.
Well, you already voted for number one, so you can't vote for another number one.
Yeah, although they had talked about the mixed.
We can do two number ones.
Yeah, we can do two at a time, why not?
We got to table one till we hear back from town council, so.
That's true.
We can work on the alternate number one.
Absolutely right.
But they had talked about the mixed use behind where Toys R Us is and places like that, too.
That would be the retail corridor, yes, that is a separate.
Remember they had talked about that, and then, wasn't there someplace on Fonce Corner Road they had talked about?
Well, right, this.
Yeah, so, I mean, basically, we have state road divided into three different studies by Serp Ed here. Regardless of what they're called, we have Cross Road to Reed Road, we have Cross Road to Old Westport Road, and then we have.
Which also.
Well, which heads up to one ninety-five.
It's up to one ninety-five.
And then we have Slocum Road to New Bedford Line.
Can I just point out, all, all three of those areas are, uh, topics that the planning board didn't raise as an issue or a priority. Someone else raised it as an issue or priority, and got Serp Ed to do some studies out there without any planning board input or approval. Uh, I shouldn't say input, I think they, they, they haven't completely left us in the dark, I should, I, I shouldn't say that. But, um, to be quite frankly, I have no interest in, uh.
Um, John.
The, uh, the, and it's not that I'm not interested in making improvements, um, but the emphasis from the interest of the parties that have pursued this is, uh, increase development economic opportunity in those areas that, in my opinion, is heavily strained now because of, uh, traffic and the impacts to the residents. And I think it's, it's a quality of life issue if we are going to look at, uh, any part of Route Six or Fonce Corner Road and increase density in any way or fashion. I, I don't know if I'm just, you know, just this past Saturday, I was out and about, running some errands, and I just couldn't believe it for, and where are we, April? For the time of the year, the traffic, I went through at one point Fonce Corner Road and, uh, Route Six and Old Westport Road. Could not believe the traffic in the morning over there. Later on in the day, I was up at Crossroads and Route Six, and later on in the day, I was up at Reed Road and Route Six, and it's just nuts. The amount of traffic on a Saturday in this town on, in the middle of April. We're not talking about a holiday, we're not talking about a complete, uh, rainout where everybody's, you know, can't do any yard work or anything. It was a Saturday morning and afternoon. At some point, we are going to make Dartmouth so undesirable that we're going to hurt ourselves. Where no one's going to want to live here, and, and we seem to be focusing in on, we need to do something and generate new revenue and not consider the impacts of quality of life in Dartmouth when it comes to the flow of traffic and the ease of people getting from one end of the town to the other. It's difficult now. Uh, you know, you and I were just talking about this evening, how many times have we seen Fonce Corner Road widening in our lifetime? I think it's four times.
Yep.
And it's still failing. And I don't think the bridge project is going to improve anything out there, I think, you know, it, it, you know, we're still going to be a logjam because all we do is keep adding retail, um, to the area and, uh, or, or, uh, density to the area. And, and the land is still there, and when we're talking about new opportunities, we haven't developed the potential to what zoning is today, and we're looking at even increasing density. We don't even have any idea what the impact of the town is on what zoning is today. It scares me, to be quite honest with you, that our roads can't handle it now, that people like, and I'm, it's not just me, uh, you know, I certainly have friends and relatives and neighbors that are just as, um, impatient or upset as I am about the, uh, the amount of traffic, uh, in town and how we've divided the town, uh, with this Route Six corridor and our commercial district.
But we have the ability to look at those areas and not necessarily go along with what the intent of those studies were, but to look at those areas and say, how do we protect it? Right now, they can just do. But if we look at it and say, well, maybe we can mix the use and maybe help economic development, but in a decreased sort of way.
Limit the impact.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how to word this, but I mean, right now, it's like, anything, well, not anything goes, we have zoning in place, obviously, but could we change the zoning to make it more, um, family-friendly or, I mean, you know, the thing that amazes me is everybody talks about traffic. Go to Boston, go to New York, and those people would be more than willing to come to live in Dartmouth.
I, I agree with you, but go to Westport and go to Akushna, and they're not dealing with the traffic that they have in Dartmouth. And, and we don't have to travel too far, I can go to Tiverton, I can go to, uh, Little Compton. Beautiful areas in the south coast here, they don't have to deal with the traffic, and you know what? Their, their children are uneducated, uh, there isn't garbage over the, all over the streets because they don't have trash pickup, uh, you know, all the services.
Yeah, but I don't want to pay the taxes.
Their taxes, thank you.
And, and, and necessary, people aren't moving out of their towns because their taxes are so high. That's my point, is at what point is cheap taxes worth the quality of life, uh, that we're going to lose, that people are going to move out of town? I think we're getting close to that point where people are upset with, um, maneuvering around town and the amount of traffic, and we've got no solutions to it for, we're looking at, um, economic development opportunities in these areas that all it means is increased density and more traffic, and yet we don't have any money to fix the roads that we have and improve the traffic flow in town, and we have no future corridors available to get anybody from the north end of the town to the south end of the town. We're limited to Fonce Corner Road and Reed Road and Hicksville Road, that's it. Those bridges are only so wide, and those, and those roads are only so wide, we're all taking takens. And you look how many years we've been talking about Tucker Road and the widening and realigning that intersection. Uh, and it's going to be probably another ten years before it ever gets done.
No, not really.
The, um, the, the one thing that got this conversation started, and you missed at the last meeting, uh, was my subcommittee reports, uh, both the, uh, retail study and the UMass partnership. Uh, the, these are, this area of which we speak, uh, at least the, the south side of Route Six. There's potential there for the town, uh, with the proper planning to allow for commercial yet universal university housing, as an example, to help clean up some of the parcels of land that are underutilized, that are eyesores, that are, um, not direct abudders to the university, but that would provide much-needed, so an independent company can come in, provide the service of off-campus housing for graduate students, let's say, in a, in a facility that was designed and built to house students, not in a facility that was built as a motor inn a hundred years ago that attracts problems and issues. It would give the incentive to help clean up some of this area and make that a better, more pleasant place to live. So, much like Bliss Corner, you know, Bliss Corner, we didn't need all those parking spots, we've created a zone.
But it's a vicious cycle, Kevin, you know, when the university came, first came into town, they had plenty of housing for their students. And then, as it expanded, it grew, they started, you know, then you started the senior motel, so yeah, we could develop, you know, that kind of housing, and then the campus expands again, and they don't have the housing, and we get back to off-campus housing and, and, and additional traffic and all the, all the strains it puts on, um, businesses that are getting close to failing, guys say, oh, you know, I'll take advantage of that, and put student housing, uh, student housing here. And I'm not, you know, if the board wants to go in that direction, I'll certainly work with the board, I just, it's not a priority of mine to, uh.
I, I, I think this board has, within its powers to help the town and clean up that section of town, that section of roadway in the town, um, in a positive way. The mixed use, um, I was down south the last week, and they, you know, I, I saw what they are proposing for the Swansea Mall in action, where you drive into a commons, and, and I'm going to look up and do some research and try to share it with the board. There are one side of the mall townhouses, nice neat rows, townhouses, townhouses, townhouses. There's a section that's a school, there's a section that's the shopping mall, there's the movie theater, all within a large facility. And, and that is the type of thing that's coming, and, and that type of project would fit nicely on the back lot of Toys R Us, behind Home Depot. That's i- if we allowed for the zoning.
So is that conceptional, or they already do?
No, they are built, they are living there, they are, you're able to get on your bike and ride to the supermarket, yeah. No, Swansea is still, John, I don't know if you got an update on Swansea, what, what's going on in the mall.
Oh, this is another part of the country you saw.
I, I saw this.
There's a couple down the Cape, and as soon as I can find out where they are, there's a couple down the Cape that have done that.
This was right in Myrtle Beach, so, and this is what the concept that they're trying to redevelop part of the Swansea Mall to look like. And I don't know if that's going forward, or.
Haven't heard any updates.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that is something that we can be in the forefront if we take the time now and prioritize this.
Yeah, so I think the question is, do we want to look at, study this area and decide what to do, rather than agreeing on what needs to be done there? Because I, I think there's probably some differences of opinion about how the problem needs to be fixed, assuming that the problem is that, you know, it's a part of town that, that is not very attractive and is not generating a lot of, uh, income for the town.
And it's not a question of whether we add density or we lower the density, it's a question of taking the whole picture and just looking at it and saying, what do we want to do?
And, and we can't do anything, all we can do is, is give the, you know, create the guidelines to allow someone else to say, hey, look at that, we could buy this parcel of land, we could raise the buildings, we could erect the new buildings. All we're doing is planning for them, to, to allow them to do so.
Yeah, so, but are you advocating which part of the retail corridor are you?
Well, I, I prefer the Westport to Lincoln Park, because again, they've built it, now people will come. Lincoln Park is now not a concept, it's actuality, and I believe Lincoln Park will be the Paydame Village of Dartmouth Street, and this Route Six corridor could be the Bliss Corner section of Route Six.
So that would be from Lincoln Park to Walmart?
Walgreens, Walmart, that intersection, and I'm only saying, I don't want to chew, to bite off more than we can chew. I'm saying, let's focus on the south side. The south side is where the questionable things is, let's treat it as, let's see how that goes. The north side has more residential, there's already more established businesses there. It's already, the development has already started to redesign on its own. So I'm saying the fo- the south side of it as a Bliss Corner redistricting area type of.
You know, that was interesting, because I ran into someone the other day who just, just coming back from Florida, and they sold their house in Marymount, and she said, we thought we could buy a condo in Dartmouth. She says, it's like getting on a waiting list, you gotta be, you gotta wait ten years to get a condo in Dartmouth. She says, what are we supposed to do? She says, you know, we don't want the house anymore, the kids are gone, we want to live in a condo, and there is no place in Dartmouth to buy. She says, they go on the market, she says, you don't even know they were on the market, they're gone before they even, you know, oh, Mrs. Smith is thinking of selling her condo, well, there's still people already lined up before she even finishes her sentence. I mean, there is no place for some peo-. Yeah, exactly, there is no place for some of these people to stay in Dartmouth where they were born and raised and lived and raised their children, and, but want to downsize. They're going to go look at, at Wareham and Metapoiset.
That's why we need contractor yards.
Yeah, so I mean.
Okay, so what, I mean, I'm not opposed to, to looking at that Route Six area that you just described. No, I, I might want to, at least the first meeting, include both the north and south side.
Okay.
And then, and discuss whether your suggestion is appropriate.
I'm only one of five, so.
You know, maybe we decide that, you know, jointly that, to limit the scope, but I think initially going in, I'd prefer to consider both sides. But I don't know how, uh, does anyone else feel that this should be number two? I mean, this strikes me as really a long-term project, that it's not going to get resolved very quickly.
Bliss Corner took you, what, it took three years from start to, two and a two?
I think so.
Yeah, we kind of got sidetracked a couple of times in the middle somewhere along the way.
We did, yeah, Mr. Susan?
So you're talking about a retail corridor study, is that what we're going to?
No, I don't think, is there a study for this section of land, or is this just?
I think that's what the, what was called the LID Aquifer Study.
Oh, the Aquifer, yeah, okay. I mean, we need to, we need to look at that, but I don't want to use that as our bible, I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah.
No, but I think it, it covered the same area that we're looking at, you know.
It, it did.
If we're going to look at Route Six, I'd rather look at, uh, Fonce Corner to Crossroads, both sides. The, the crossroads to, yeah.
So one ninety-five to?
No, 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 uh, Fonce Corner Road to Crossroads.
He wants to do Fonce Corner Road.
That's just a snippet of that.
You don't want to do Route Six.
Yeah, Route Six, both sides of Route Six, from Old Westport Road.
Yeah.
To Crossroads.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so that, that would be this section of.
The reason I'm saying that is it, 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 the Aquifer is, when you're looking from Crossroads to Westport, you're dealing with the Aquifer, we're going to be very limited on what we can do there unless we change the Aquifer zoning laws. That area there, you have a lot more flexibility to make changes.
I, I'm just thinking, you know, as far as, as problem issues in town, the other section has more issues.
And then my next question is, do we want to, I mean, I, I don't think we're going to resolve this this evening, I think we should probably put the priority list for.
No, I think you're right, I'm.
I think it was, we thought it was going to be a quick discussion, you know.
Yeah, no.
You know, um.
I agree.
And I would encourage people, if they have any other ideas, to put it on the list.
That's right.
You know, uh.
We need to sleep on it. We need to sleep on it.
We need to, we need to put the contractor yard in there.
If we went with that, why wouldn't we go up to here? Because it's very similar, I, I would say.
Obviously, the smell does not want to include residents involved in here, where there isn't as many over here.
Is it, is it a safe, safe assumption that we're, we're, we'll be working with Anthony on the sign bylaws and the contractor yards in the meantime, while we wait for the census of this group on the three corridor studies of Route Six?
Yeah, and maybe we can at least discuss the cell tower bylaw in terms of the approach.
Sure, okay, sounds good.
And the subdivision rules and regulations, I mean, that's a, that should be a no-brainer.
That should be given, I mean, I thought we were going to get that done.
Yeah, that was another thing we were waiting on, town council.
So we can discuss that with him as well. All right, so we don't need you guys, we're, we're all set.
That's right, that's it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.